The regular meeting of the City Council from Monday, May 16. I will request the Deputy City Clerk to call the role, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yorin Galati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here and present. Before Deputy City Clerk shares how people can participate, I just want to welcome everyone again. And we're glad to see people in the chambers as well as people who are watching virtually. We have a new hybrid format that regardless of where you're sitting, you'll be able to give input if you so choose. And I want to thank, start all meetings by thanking our incredible staff that helps the city to run so beautifully every single day. This week is National Public Works Week. And I know the City Manager is going to speak to that, but I just want to underscore the importance of the work they do. And let me tell you, they do a lot, such as reviewing engineering plans, applying for funding grants, filling potholes, removing illegal dumping, and so much more. All of these improve our everyday quality of life. And tonight, there's actually a formal proclamation and it's on our consent agenda. But I just wanted to highlight that. But before we turn to the rest of the agenda, I would also like to touch on the ongoing pandemic. The U.S., and I think everyone in this room knows this, recently surpassed 1 million deaths due to COVID. And we recognize both the people who've lost their lives as well as the impact on the people who lost someone. So we acknowledge this pandemic's impact on our community mental health. And we have a special presentation tonight as we recognize May as Mental Health Month. We're truly in this together and I hope we continue to support each other as a community. We've got a great meeting tonight. Thanks for tuning in and showing up. And I will turn it to the Deputy City Clerk to share how folks can participate this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. The meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. And anyone who is unable to make it to the council chambers can still provide public comments by telephone by calling 669-900-9128. And the meeting ID is 899-2635-9885. Or comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you are commenting over the telephone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. If you are commenting through Zoom, please use the raise hand button to let us know that you want to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience technical difficulties, please email city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. For those of you who are attending in person and wish to provide public comment, you can approach the podium once Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. For public comments not related to this evening's agenda, you can fill out a public comment card found on the lobby table. And I also have some right here. And then you can submit them to me. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in or if from outside of San Rafael. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. So the first item is open time for public expression. And as we try this new hybrid format, we usually start with the folks that are in the room. And as Britta just talked about, I have, I think, six or seven cards. And if you're speaking on the same thing, you are more than welcome to each come up for two minutes or if one person wants to speak for all of you, that is fine as well. We are here to listen to you. And so I'll start with Victoria Cooper. If she so would like to, unless there's someone else. Did you want to speak instead? Oh, you can, yeah, yes, go ahead. The order's not important. Thank you. If you could identify yourself.
Thank you so much. And good evening, council members. My name is Ruth Weathero. And I'm the President of the Residents Association at Rotary Manor. Rotary Manor is right down the street, Fifth and H, four blocks from here. And it's a wonderful senior apartment complex housing 99 low-income seniors. It's very well managed, so much so that we had zero cases of COVID during the last two years. So, but we have a problem. You may know that six years ago, there developed a large open sinkhole right near the building. And it's on the property when a city storm sewer culvert rusted out and collapsed. And it was a big hole and it's sort of been fenced off. It's very near one of the buildings. You can see it when you drive by, the chain link fencing and the caution tape and the weeds growing up out of the dirt and making a kind of a terrible eyesore for beautiful Sun Valley. It's the gateway to Sun Valley. But most importantly, it poses a danger to our residents. People or animals could fall in. It blocks the emergency access to part of the buildings. And it denies our use of the property for extra parking so that many of our residents have to park right on Fifth Avenue. And we understand that it is the city's responsibility to replace this culvert and restore the use of our property. But nothing has been done. And residents are very upset and frustrated. And as President of the Residents Association, not Rotary Club, just the residents, they've elected me. They ask me all the time, what can we do about the sinkhole? What's being done about it? Why hasn't anything been done? And I've been passing on excuses that have passed down to me. But really, six years is enough. And it's time to fix the sinkhole, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
And I can submit my.
That would be great. Yep. And if there are others that want to speak, I can call you up or you can come up on your own.
Thank you. My name is Via Lynn Berks. And I have lived in this good city of San Rafael since 1995. Now I live at nearby Rotary Manor Senior Residence Complex at 1821 Fifth Avenue. The total population there is 99 seniors, many with disabilities, some of whom you can see here, quite a few of whom you can see here. We are bringing to your attention a problem which has existed at our dwelling site for the past six years. There has been about six-foot-deep, large sinkhole due to a defect in the city of San Rafael Street runoff drainage pipe, which has not been fixed for these past six years. The major problem is that this sinkhole and surrounding fencing obstructs a former emergency exit from the site to Fifth Avenue. Now it's completely blocked. Nobody can go through there. And there used to be a nice walkway with a trellis and, you know, as some other people can tell you who've been here longer than me. So it's a danger to inhabitants in case of emergency. From the whole complex, we only have one narrow exit to Fifth Avenue. For 99 people living there, we only have one narrow exit. So that's a problem. Also, there's a fire danger as tall, dry weeds grow there, this whole area that's around the sinkhole. Please give us an answer why this large sinkhole has not been fixed for six years. When can we expect it will be fixed so our emergency exit is cleared once again?
Thank you, Visha. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that two minutes?
It is. Thank you. Yeah, come on up.
Hello, my name is Sharon Seifert and I also live at Rotary Manor. And after having lived in Mill Valley and worried about fire danger all the time, I was up in the hills, I came to San Rafael and thought, well, there's nothing that's going to happen on the ground level here. It's safe. But I live in the B building at Rotary Manor. The B building faces the back. There's a hillside back there. And also, if there were to be a fire that came in from the west, it would be extremely difficult for me, I'm on the third floor, and others, and I can walk all right, and others to get out of the building. Because if it came from the west, it's coming right toward us and there's no exit. Except to have to double back, which may put you in harm's way, the fire. So that's a real concern. And with all the fire dangers that we've had, it's pretty frightening at times to think about what could happen. And I'd like to see that prevented by getting that sinkhole fixed, opening up our emergency exits. And also, I'd like to see the city of San Rafael get rid of some of the weeds around that sinkhole. They're just not only unsightly, but they're unsafe. Very dry and they can catch fire easily. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sharon.
Good evening. My name is Triva Strauss. I live at Rotary Manor and we love it. It's a delightful place to live. But we don't have access to the street from anywhere other than the one exit that would take care of many people. And I would like to see the parking lot, so-called, where the sinkhole is rebuilt to give us that access through the fences to Fifth Avenue. It's on the right side of the building if you're staying in the building. And it would make us all feel much safer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Triva. I also have cards from Victoria and Wayne. Do you want to address this on this? It's up to you.
Hello. I'm relatively new to San Rafael. I moved to California from the East Coast 20 years ago. But I've lived in Sausalito and San Francisco and Mill Valley and then I finally came here. And I am very delighted to see all the services and the diversity of San Rafael. So I was disappointed to see that in my time at Rotary Manor of the past five years, the sinkhole just remains the same. It gets worse because it's overgrowth. And it is a real danger for anyone who would be near it. The thing that I'm the most concerned about is the continuing degradation of it. Because the more time that goes by, the more it degrades. So I just wanted to mention that in addition to what else has been said. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. And welcome to San Rafael.
Wayne Baker. Apologize for my voice. Been there since before the sinkhole. And it has deprived me of my garden space and then annoyance and irritation. But that's pretty much irrelevant as you said. In case of emergency, it's just tolerable. I don't know if you're familiar with the layout. But all the people in San Rafael swaggers wouldn't have a way out. If anything came in from the west, it would be impossible for people to get out. The other speakers.
Thank you, Wayne. What else? Yeah, come on up. Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Maria De Gregorio. I am also a resident in Rotary Manor. And I just want to support all the things that my neighbors said before. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. So, hold on one second. So when we receive information or questions or concerns through open comment, because it's not on the agenda, we can't formally respond. But Ruth was really great because she wrote down, like all you did, her email and her phone number. So I'm going to pass this down to go to the City Manager. And he will talk to the respective, I'm sure to the Fire Chief and to City Attorney and make sure that he circles back. So if you can make sure that, so let her know. I have a whole stack of them, but probably is Ruth. I think going to Ruth is best. I see nods of heads. Yes. Okay. Thank you all for coming down and talking to us. I know it's a bit of a trip. It's not that far away, but it was still coming down on a Monday night. So thank you. So I'll continue with public comments. I saw Salama. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. Hello. My name is Salama Lox and I am San Rafael's representative to the Commission on Aging. And I wanted to share with you what the Commission is doing this month. And we are having our Health Forum. And this year, the theme is the Master Plan Aging: Fifth Bold Gold, which is Affording Aging. So if we want to live to be 100, there are a couple of things we might need to start doing right now. This is going to be held at the Key Room at Homeward Bound, which is 1385 North Hamilton Parkway in Novato, in person. You just need to bring your vaccination record. And we have speakers from the California Department of Aging, the Buck Institute, Justice in Aging, as well as a gerontology, Professor Gerontology from UCLA. I think the easiest way at this point for me to say for you to contact, how to purchase a ticket, is to call 415-987-7023. Since I don't have access to give you the link right now. And go from there as to the cost and if there's some scholarships that people need. And lunch will be provided by the chefs of the Fresh Starts Culinary Academy. Thank you. Oh, I didn't tell you the time. Sorry. It's May 26, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Salama. And thank you for being San Rafael's representative. Thank you. Are there others in the chambers that would like to speak during open time before we go to our virtual audience? Okay, not seeing any. I will turn it over to the Deputy City Clerk.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear that notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a couple of hands.
Thank you, Ava Crissanti. I wanted to express my sympathy to the people from Rotary Manor who've been waiting many, many years to have the sinkhole fixed. It's got to be aggravating. I do want to point out that there are seniors that are being kept in the city of San Rafael's police-run internment camp, which the euphemism is SSA or Security Services Area or Safe Services Area. And that facility has no bathrooms, no running water, no electricity. It has no adequate protection. It's in serial violation of a new law passed in January, AB 362. And every effort I've made to the city of San Rafael to get them to conform to the new law to provide actual habitable standards at that site has been rebuffed. This is a majority Black and Latino population that's being forced to live under a freeway. There has been no proper health inspection by the state of California or by the county of the site, as far as I can tell from the CPR I submitted to the city. And it's a medically vulnerable population with a lot of seniors. And so I wouldn't hesitate to say that that sinkhole is a major priority for the city. I would say an equal priority should be making sure that that site, that SSA, is dealt with as soon as possible. The liability for the city of San Rafael is considerable, given the number of laws that you're violating and the abuses that these poor individuals kept in that site have been forced to endure.
Is there additional virtual? Okay.
Michael Wilson.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Kate and Councilmembers. Michael Wilson, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services for the County Marin, Adult and Aging Services. And I just wanted to kind of highlight 920 Grand Avenue. It's a new residential treatment facility. I'll kind of start by reading the opening paragraph to our news release. It's upholding our commitment to connecting community members with mental health and substance use services. Marin Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, partnering with Bay Area-based Progress Foundation to operate a new adult residential treatment facility at 920 Grand Avenue in San Rafael. It is the first licensed treatment center of its kind in Marin. And it'll be 16 beds for adults 18 and over with serious mental health issues, primarily for individuals on conservatorships. Our goal here is to bring individuals that have been placed outside of the county back to Marin, back to their communities, family and friends. It'll have 24/7 round-the-clock treatment, provides normalizing, client-centered and recovery-based care. Will help Marin residents return, as I mentioned, and receive kind of appropriate and really quality treatment. Progress Foundation's a wonderful organization. And we will help to develop the residents there to develop self-sufficiency, transition to community living. We expect really great results from this. And as I already mentioned, kind of the location of it. And really happy to have this project to be able to bring forward to the community and the city of San Rafael as your neighbor from San Anselmo. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Just a couple more hands.
Okay, actually, before they go, because I know that some of the residents, do you mind? So hold on one moment, because I just wanted to mention that later on in the agenda, we do have a capital improvement project agenda item. So there is a correlation to what you brought forward. And the City Manager thought it might be appropriate to share that. And that way, if you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we wanted to, so if you could.
Yes, Mayor Kate, our last agenda item tonight. Item 8B is our capital improvement program. It's the preliminary capital improvement program. So it's just for the council to hear about, ask any questions for the community to hear, ask any questions tonight. And then we'd bring it back with the budget at your June meetings. But there is a project that the group was referring to tonight is listed in the preliminary capital improvement program under the Stormwater section. And it's a very highly ranked project. And it's got over $1 million set aside for it. So I just wanted to make sure, I'm happy to get in touch with Ruth tomorrow. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that it's also included in this CIP, which will be later on tonight's agenda. It's the last item.
And you don't have to stay until that last agenda item to hear it. So we just wanted to make sure to give you that feedback before you left. So with that, Deputy City Clerk, we'll go back to the virtual.
Thank you. There's a couple more hands.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. I'm David Smith. As you know, I'm with Responsible Growth in Marin. And I'd like to bring something to your attention about the Northgate Mall project, which I think is probably the biggest project in North San Rafael for decades and one that will have a huge impact on the community here. An important meeting is being held about the project tomorrow. It's a design review board meeting. And the city gave notice to the community by sending postcards to local residents and placing a notice in the IJ. We're also told that all relevant HOAs and community groups were informed via that postcard. But we know of at least one made up of the closest residents to the mall who did not receive such a notice. But more importantly, only houses within 500 feet of the project were sent that postcard. And I don't know how many houses are within 500 feet of Northgate, but it's not many. but it's not many, especially compared with the number of people who will be affected by the enormous amount of housing that's planned and the attendant increase in traffic and congestion, noise, et cetera. And while acknowledging that this notice radius was increased from a 300-feet number, it's still clearly nowhere near enough to serve the intended purpose of informing the affected community of an important meeting discussing such a large and consequential project. Our volunteers spent their own time and money to print and deliver flyers advising residents of the DRB meeting. I live on Nova Albion, and folks just four houses up from Northgate Drive did not receive the postcard. Apparently, a notice was also put in the IJ, but I'm not sure how many people scour through the paper every day just to see if there's a notice. Again, acknowledging that the city did everything it was legally required to do to notify residents, important meetings that request community input for a project of this magnitude, which really deserve more. The city should be going out of its way to encourage.
Jay.
Good evening, Mayor Colan and council members. Jay Africa, the Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. I'm sorry I'm not able to join you at the chambers tonight, but I wanted to just spend like a minute echoing my colleague, Michael Wilson's remarks earlier, that we are grateful to, the county's grateful for the partnership with the City of San Rafael in developing the 16-bed adult transitional residential facility at 920 Grand. As you know, we are constantly trying to create resources for folks that are close to where they live. And so we really are very grateful to have this in San Rafael. We know that the success rates of people who are, who have behavioral health or substance use conditions, especially when they're receiving treatment, is have a higher rate when they're closer to their communities and the places that they live and their families. So we wanted to be here tonight to just, again, say thank you, but also remain an ongoing partner to you and your residents so that we can ensure that people who are being housed or placed and receiving services, hopefully in the beginning of fall of this year, will be successful and that we are here to provide answers as we continue to build this really wonderful facility that will be trauma-informed. So thank you very much. And I know that you'll be talking about this later, but also for recognizing me as mental health awareness man. Thank you so much.
I see no other hands. I'll just give it a few more seconds. I seen, oh, I have one.
Okay.
Annika.
Hi, my name is Annika Osborne, and I live in San Rafael. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Sustainable San Rafael. We are increasingly concerned about our worsening climate crisis and strongly support San Rafael taking actions to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. The issue I want to focus on is the use of natural gas, which is methane gas in buildings. This is because use of this fossil gas in buildings, primarily for space and water heating, produces at least one quarter of Marin's greenhouse gas emissions, second only to transportation. The County of Marin has started work on an update of its Green Building Code, which was adopted in 2020. And a key focus of the update will be to address the use of fossil gas in new construction to avoid making greenhouse gas emissions even worse. The county plans to address two categories of this new construction, requiring, you know, all electric in new buildings. And for remodels or existing residences, the county is planning to require the renovations to meet a certain target energy score that allows for a flexible range of building measures, including heat pump space and water heaters. So I want to bring this issue and effort to your attention and request that you take two actions now. To add the Green Building Code update as an agenda item in an upcoming council meeting, so your engagement in this process can be discussed in a public forum. And two, to support San Rafael staff in actively participating with the county staff in developing the updated Green Building Code. This is a great opportunity to leverage county staff and resources to help San Rafael meet its climate goals. And with the statewide requirements of new buildings to be all-electric, still several years away, and increasing development pressure from the regional housing needs allocation, we feel strongly that San Rafael needs to join with.
Thank you, Annika.
I see no further hands. I'm just going to give it a few more seconds.
Okay.
I see no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. We'll close a public comment and bring it back to the city manager for his report. City Manager Schutz.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and City Council. I have a few announcements tonight. The first, there was a top-of-the-fold headline in today's IJ that said, "Street Market Cancel Season." And I just wanted to bring it up to make sure that it's understood that our Dining Under the Lights program will run every Thursday in the downtown and the West End, and an extra Friday night block party in the West End. It does start next Thursday, and that goes on from starting next Thursday all the way through September. It was the farmer's market component that it was, the Agricultural Institute of Marin runs. It's taking a pause this year. They want to reassess and see what, what the community would like to see as part of the dining under the lights or as part of a downtown market. So they're doing some listening sessions that are, that are coming up for that. But I just wanted to highlight that the Dining Under the Lights does start next Thursday, and will go every Thursday through September. And we're very much looking forward to that starting. Also, very quickly, because I've mentioned it a couple times in the city manager report, the Park and Recreation Master Plan questionnaire and surveying our residents to ask what they'd like to see in parks and recreation facilities is continuing. It does run through the end of this month, so people still have time. It was at cityofsanrefel.org/parksplan, all one word, is the easiest way to find it in English, Spanish or Vietnamese. So there's still time to weigh in. We've got a lot of people that have weighed in already, but there's still time to do so through the end of this month. Also, as the mayor mentioned in your opening remarks, it is National Public Works Week this week. There's a proclamation on the consent calendar. And in San Rafael, we have amazing public works staff led by Director Bill Guerin. There was one whereas in the proclamation that jumped out at me, it says, "Public Works personnel are involved in the maintenance, planning, design and construction of streets, transportation facilities, parks, storm drains, public buildings and operations, right-of-way management and emergency operations and response, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents." And the fact that it could have gone on so much further from that as well, because it didn't mention fleet management or getting, securing state and federal grants or all sorts of other things that Public Works does. But I think it's just a testament to show what a great Public Works team that we have in San Rafael. And I just wanted to recognize them. May 15 through 21 is Public Works, National Public Works Week. And I'm hoping that the council will approve the proclamation on the consent calendar today. And also, as kind of further testimony to the work product of Public Works is the last item that I mentioned on the agenda with the CIP and just the extensiveness of that list and kind of the deep understanding of the community. And we may not have funds to do everything that we want to do, but we have a really good handle on all of the things that need to take place. And we're working towards getting funds and finding grants to be able to do everything that's a city council and community priority. And then lastly, I just wanted to turn it over to City Attorney Rob Epstein for, to announce a new employee that's joined us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and members of the council, members of the community. It is the worst of times and the best of times. And first, the bad news. Our extraordinary Assistant City Attorney Lisa Goldfind has tendered her retirement from the City of San Rafael effective the end of the month. I refused to accept the retirement, and then I was told that I was not allowed to do that. And so she will be leaving us, and we are wishing her the very best. And she's here with us tonight. But also with us tonight is the good news, which is our new Assistant City Attorney, who will request to rise at this time. I promised that she wouldn't have to make a speech. But I'm delighted to introduce to you and our community Genevieve Coyle, who is a San Rafael resident and who I am so happy to introduce to you and to our colleagues at City Hall. I've gotten to know her over these past months. I can't recall ever being in a situation where I've checked references and had the people be beyond effusive in their comments as they were about Genevieve. So I'm really looking forward to working with her. And I know that she is very much looking forward to working with all of you and with our staff. So thank you for the opportunity to introduce her tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes the city manager's report.
Thank you. And Lisa, we're going to miss you. I'm sure you'll be feted by the staff. You've been here a long time, and we really appreciate all that you've done for the city. So thank you. And Genevieve, welcome. Next time, we'll put you on the spot and have you say something, but not tonight. And with that, I'll see if there's any comments from the public on the city manager's report. Anyone in the chambers like to comment? Not seen anyone. We'll see if there's anyone virtually.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. And once you hear the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see one hand at this time.
Thanks, Eva Crisanti. I wanted to speak to the city manager's comments about Public Works. It appears that from my CPRA request, one thing I thought was interesting is that your Public Works Department, in the weeks before a 65-year-old woman died in your internment camp under the freeway that has no bathroom showers, no emergency medical equipment, et cetera, et cetera. In the weeks before she died in the freezing cold early in the morning, apparently, the big issue for your Public Works wasn't making sure that there was proper running water or that you were looking for a site that would be suitable and humane for a population that was medically vulnerable, and many of them were seniors. What instead you were looking at was putting up a heavy-duty fence so as not to offend the businesses and nonprofits that surround the area you forced these people to live in. And that the cost of that fence was $16,000. I'd like to point out that an AED device, which was absent on the morning that this woman died, which might have been useful in reviving her, which might have saved her life, an AED device would have cost about a quarter of that. There does not appear to be a first aid kit, so much as a first aid kit on the site. There doesn't appear to be any pulse oximeter. There's, there's, you know, for the amount of money you spent on security, you could have hired a full-time live-in nurse to just be there to oversee things. There's been nothing but abuse for people in that camp.
I see no other hands. Just give it a few more seconds.
This is comment on the city manager's report.
And I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll close a public comment and come back to my fellow council members for what they have been up to. Start with the vice mayor. Excuse me.
Thank you. And instead of tonight of talking about the items that I've been attending, I wanted to make a comment on the Proclamation and Recognition of Jewish American Heritage Month that's on our consent agenda and share with you and the public. Earlier this year, I partnered with Corte Madera Councilmember Eli Beckman and the Jewish Community Relations Council to form a group of North Bay Jewish electives. We started with a small group of self-identified Jewish electives. We're about seven, and it quickly grew to a group of over 20 Jewish electives from every city in Marin to Santa Rosa, Hillsburg and Napa. Together, we meet to share ideas, help one another navigate acts of hate against our communities, and bring our voice forward to enact change. As acts of white supremacy and anti-Semitic violence continue to rise across the Bay Area in Marin and across our nation and internationally, we are committed to ensuring that San Rafael and Marin continues to stand against all acts of hate. With tonight's proclamation, we celebrate the hard-fought progress won through the struggle and sacrifice of Jewish Americans, and we rededicate ourselves to building a world where diversity is cherished and faith is protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Similarly to the vice mayor, I wanted to call out the proclamation supporting Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month to celebrate accomplishments and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, recognize their journeys and acknowledge regrettably how precipitous the incidence of hate speech and hate violence has been inflicted upon the API community. There are many subgroups and subgroup identities that have not fared well during the pandemic. Some have fared better. And I would direct folks to visit the StopAPIHate.org site, which tracks data and incidents that have happened to Asian Americans. I would call out, on Sunday, 5/8, we had May Madness in downtown San Rafael. Being there in person was amazing. The energy felt like pre-pandemic times. It was really wonderful to see community members. I did my own unofficial poll of attendees, asking where they were coming from and how they heard about it. I was struck by how many folks who are not just out of town, but not even from Marin, who ventured all the way over here. So that was really great to have our city visited by so many folks from around the Bay Area and beyond. On Thursday, May 12, I did go to Sacramento. I was invited to participate on a panel on intergenerational collaboration and the next generation of city leadership. I was joined by Rita Xavier, Mayor of San Pablo, who is 82 years old and represented, I think, our older generation, although it didn't seem that way based on her energy and the verve with which she serves her community. Anthony Tave from Pinol, who's more my age. And it was moderated by Tessa Rudnick from El Cerrito. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I have reports on four different events and issues, all of which are tough ones. Sometimes the answer isn't clear, and every one of these are difficult ones. First, the Central Sanitation Agency. Last week, we heard the first initial report on an engineering study that's being conducted jointly with the Marin Municipal Water District on the use, the direct potable reuse of recycled water from the wastewater treatment plant here in San Rafael. The short answer is it's very expensive, but it is very doable to have potable water come from that plant. But very expensive and controversial. The next somewhat related issue that we're dealing with is at the San Rafael Sanitation Agency. There, we have a group of customers whose, the main sewer that serves their property is literally in the sand of the bay. It's below the bay water. And as a consequence, we have saltwater intrusion into our system, and it's deteriorating the system. Replacing that system and providing service to those customers is a big and expensive task again because the new main is going to be up the hill, requiring them to pump up the hill. The costs and the construction of those, of those systems is a very controversial topic for those homeowners. Continuing in my path of controversy. The Lock-Lowman Development Oversight Committee met today. There, you may recall that there is a community playground in the midst of that development. And there's also a beautiful walking path that I've walked with many of you on, out on the, on the break walk. Both of those are going to be closed because they are too low. And at high tide, they, then the king tide, they flood. So they're going to be elevated. That will require removing the playground equipment. That will not be a permanent condition. The playground equipment will be returned, but the playground will be closed for five to six months, as will the walking path. So we've tried to get the word out to everyone, and we put up signs with QR codes and things, but we've had neighbors put up their own signs over our signs, expressing displeasure with the, with the plan. But that is, that is going forward as well. And not to be outdone, we also have something from the Dominican area. Our Deputy Director of Emergency Management, Quinn Gardner, is overseeing some parking adjustments in that neighborhood. I've been fielding inquiries from people trying to understand exactly why those adjustments are being made and whether there is some other solution to the problem. We are having a community meeting next week to We are having a community meeting next week, Tuesday, May 24, at 6:30 PM, to air all of the issues surrounding those parking adjustments. So that's my fun report.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I attended also May Madness. In fact, I ran into Councilmember Hill, and yeah, it was amazing, the diversity as well. And so I actually have a friend from LA who came and won one of the awards. So it was very well attended, but it didn't feel very crowded, so I felt actually really good about that. Attended as well the Canal Policy Working Group, and that's the collaboration between the County of Marin, the City of San Rafael, and some of the CBOs in the canal. And we talk about the housing element process and trying to figure out housing. Also attended the San Rafael Park and Services Feedback Meeting at Pica with. It was very well attended, and it's always great, like there are like some issues and opportunities, but they upbeat, you know, how the community is always comes together to support anything that the city is trying to do, you know, to help them out as well. Also attended the monthly Economic Development Committee meeting with Mayor Kate. And so the dining under the lights was there, and I think in addition to, I was very sad to lose also the farmers market, but I hear that there's going to be some CSA boxes, the Community Supported Agriculture box, that people might be able to pick up from the East San Rafael, or East-West, West San Rafael, on the west end.
Pound Farm.
Pound Farm, Pound Farm, yes. Yes, thank you. And then finally, I attended the 2022 Leaders of the North Bay Awards with the North Bay Leadership Council. And one of the awards was actually for the Canal WiFi team empowering the Latino community, and there was a collaborative approach between the CBOs of San Rafael, San Rafael City Schools, Canal Alliance, Marin Community Foundation, and the Marin County Free Library. And it was like a big, you know, award to recognize that there was very limited WiFi during the pandemic, and through these collaborations, there was a lot of free WiFi provided. And in addition to Chromebooks, especially for students that they needed to have like a virtual learning, and I received a proclamation for the City of San Rafael since... on your behalf. Since nobody else was there? So, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have two items I'll report out on. Also on the consent calendar is a proclamation around Gun Violence Awareness Day, which I think is probably all on our minds after this past weekend. And Chief Spiller and I are part of the Marin County District Attorney's Gun Safety Collaborative, and our first event is going to be a gun buyback event that's on June 4, Saturday, June 4, from 9 to 1 at the Sheriff's Parking Lot on Las Gamos. Anyone can turn in to up to three functional firearms in exchange for cash, no questions asked. And we're really grateful for the partnerships and stakeholders that are helping to put on this event, and almost all the cities and towns in Marin County are contributing to the fund to help with the have a successful buyback event. So we're really grateful to the other jurisdictions for participating, as well as, I should say, law enforcement is also participating, as is hospitals, education institutions. So we're hoping for a good event that will get rid of unwanted guns in our community. The other item is SMART, the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit. On May 1, they resumed Sunday train service. They carried 633 riders, which was 60% of pre-pandemic average for Sunday, and we have had the community asking for Sunday service, so obviously, there is already some demand there. In addition, SMART, we will be adding 10 more weekday trips beginning Monday, June 13. I guess I could have brought that one up in June, but we talked about the last meeting. So our weekday scheduled trips will be a total of 36. Those trips have been added based on the listening sessions that SMART has done and lots of public input. So there's more information about exactly what those trips are on the SMART website. So SMART is continuing to come back towards the pre-pandemic levels. Oh, and then the last thing, I attended the St. Vincent's DePaul Ribbon Cutting Event. They are expanding into the, there's an office kind of kitty corner to where they are on B Street, and that will be a case management office where folks who need to receive support around housing or case management services can go in there, and it's very, will be very private and a great addition to the great work they're already doing. So, excuse me. With that, thank you for all that you do, my colleagues. You are all very busy, and I will see if there's any public comment on the council member reports. Is there anyone in, excuse me, in the chambers that would like to comment on those reports? Okay, not seen any. We'll go to virtual.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see one hand up at this time.
Thanks, Eva Crisanti. I wanted to address Councilmember Hill's comments. It is, it's important to recognize the importance of addressing anti-Asian hate crimes. Unfortunately, I've seen the largely white San Rafael Police Department harass Asian Americans in San Rafael, and I think that that sort of anti-Asian hate crime is as important as any other. I think it's been really unfortunate that in this entire discussion of anti-Asian hate crimes, I say this as someone who's half-Asian and grew up in the county and is well familiar with how racist this county, which was ranked the most racially segregated county in the entire state of California in 2017, and this city, San Rafael, which is literally the most racially segregated county, city in the entire county. I'm well familiar with the sort of disparagement that Asian Americans have to contend with, even to this day, and particularly from law enforcement, particularly from immigration, and a whole range of factors. I want to point out that we have a city council, you know, you had, you heard some nice words from Councilmember Lawrence about the canal. There is no one who represents the Canal District on the city council. The staff of the city itself is, does not include, you know, I think, any or many people from the Canal District. And again, you're in the most racially segregated city in an already highly racially segregated county. You need to do better than just write proclamations. It's a slap in the face.
I see no other hands at this time. I'll just give it a few more seconds. I don't see any further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and turn to the consent calendar. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to hold in the consent calendar? Sorry, my voice is just disappearing. Bear with me, act like it's not happening. Okay, I don't see any. If not, I will open public comment on the consent calendar. This is items 5A through 5M.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed.
Thank you. And you know, I'm still getting used to the in-person because we've been just virtual. So thank you. We actually have some in-person folks, so let's go for them, and then we'll go to the virtual. So thank you. Came all the way here. We want to hear from you. I know. So nice to meet you. Yeah, nice to see you, Sparky. Hi, Diana.
Hi, I'm Sparky Spade, and I am co-chair of the San Rafael Community Age Friendly Community Partnership, and...
I'm, excuse me, I'm Diana Lopez. I'm Sparky's co-chair for the Age Friendly San Rafael Community Partnership.
And we're here tonight to express our great gratitude and support for the city of San Rafael, who have guided us in this so many-year effort to increase and improve the age-friendliness of this city, particularly Councilmember Kurtz, who serves on our committee, and Mayor Kate, who was with us from the very beginning. Also, Catherine Coupa, who is our new representative, helping us along the way. And we appreciate everything you've done to keep San Rafael the best age-friendly city and community in Marin.
I can't follow that with anything except another thank you. And also, I want to recognize Patty McCully, who has also been really, really supportive of our work. It is an interesting process, and we are looking forward in the next year to really working on the issue of ageism, which we keep running into. Everything that we do, I have a few seconds left. Everything that we do, you know, we keep running into it, and so we have requested some funding for to do some ageism training, and if it comes through, we're really looking forward to doing it. So again, on behalf of all of us that participate in this process, thank you to each and every one of you, to the city of San Rafael, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with you. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work you've done around Marin villages. Anyone else in the chambers?
Age friendly.
Age friendly. Don't see anyone else in the chambers. Okay, now we'll go to the virtual.
So I do have one hand raised.
Thank you.
Yeah, Eva Crisanti, I just want to point out that you do have a lot of older Americans in that internment camp, and they are, again, if you can imagine what it's like, living in that camp for now over 10 months under a deafening and polluting freeway with no bathrooms, no hot and cold running water, no electricity that would power so much as an electric tea kettle so you could make a nice cup of tea to warm yourself in the freezing cold. I mean, imagine what it's like to be an older American, particularly an African-American, older American, or a Latino, older American who's already been abused by this racist system for so long. I don't understand how, you know, we can have these proclamations and recognitions without, you know, doing a basic ethical homework of prioritizing, you know, the needs of the people who have, who are basically being abused by the city in this camp in violation of the law. And that's, that just seems really obvious. Everything that I've received from the city of San Rafael in terms of CPRA material, material that I've CPRA'd, shows that the city is willfully negligent in terms of just having basic amenities in that camp. Worse, your police department is serially harassing, abusing, and even robbing people in that camp of their property, disposing of property without proper notice or permission. And on top of it, you have a police department that by Lisa Goldfine's own admission is permitted to turn on and off its body cam at its own discretion. This is a complete disgrace.
Any more public comment on the consent calendar?
I see no other, no other hands at this time. I'll just give it a few more seconds.
Okay.
I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment, request a motion on the consent agenda. Motion?
Move to approve the motion, approve the consent calendar.
So I can say...
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Jorn Spalati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. The next is a special presentation of a proclamation supporting Mental Health Awareness Month, and I've asked the vice mayor to read it because my voice is just not cooperating right now, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Proclamation and recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2022. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas mental illness are real and prevalent in our nation, and many of us will have or know someone who has mental health diagnosis at some point in our lives, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives and should feel comfortable in seeking help and support to manage these times, and whereas engaging in prevention, early identification, and early intervention are as effective ways to reduce the burden of mental illness as they are to reduce the burden of other chronic conditions, and whereas jails and prisons have often become the default places of custodial care for even nonviolent people with serious mental illnesses, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental health and well-being for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of San Rafael do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Month.
Thank you. Thank you for reading that. So we just read the proclamation. We don't have anyone to receive at this time, but we are interested if anyone in the chambers would like to make a public comment on this proclamation. Not seen anyone. We'll see if there's any members of the virtual public who would like to comment on this proclamation.
Once again, to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do, I do see two hands at this time.
Thanks. I'd like to point out how completely abject a proclamation about Mental Health Awareness Month is in the face of what's going on in the city with the quote SSA under the freeway where you're interning a majority Black and Latino unhoused population. This is a medically vulnerable group that you're forcing to live under a deafening freeway. It's not just, you know, less than 20 feet below a deafening freeway overpass, but it's between four major intersections. The first time I was able to get through the barrier to make a recording at that camp, I was blown away by how noisy it was. I could not possibly imagine what it would be like to be there for even an hour, let alone 10 months, 10 months plus, which is how long these medically vulnerable people have already been forced to be there. What do you think is the effect of that site and those conditions on their mental health? Plus, a woman died there in December, which the city of San Rafael tried to cover up. How do you think it impacts the people who are forced to be there? There's an African-American, older man who is forced to be there because his RV was seized, so he was already traumatized by losing what little home he had, and then he was forced into this abject camp. No bathrooms, no running water, only a tent to house him. It's, you know, that freeway overpass just funnels rain down onto the tents when it, when the storms hit, and the rest of the time, they're forced to inhale all this fumes and pollution. That physical, those physical components have a very serious effect on their mental health.
There is one other hand raised at this time.
Good evening again, Jay Africa, Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. I just want to say thank you for recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. As you all know, one out of five individuals will suffer sort of a mental health condition sort of in this lifetime, especially because of the pandemic and COVID. We are actually seeing many, many more people who are in distress and struggling. We know that one of the biggest barriers for people seeking help is the shame and stigma. And so it's really important for any, anyone and everyone, actually, to begin conversations about making sure that people are okay talking about needing support and assistance, especially in these difficult times. We know that mental health, mental illness really is common in many communities. It doesn't discriminate in terms of age, gender, and race or ethnicity. We do know that recovery, those for people who have mental health conditions, tend to be more successful when there are people around them that are supporting them. So I think your effort tonight is really to just recognize that we are a community that's struggling, but also we are a community that really needs to raise these issues so that we can provide assistance to people who are suffering and struggling. Behavioral Health and Recovery Services continues to be a partner of the city of San Rafael, and we really are grateful for at least recognizing this really, really important month in our time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Africa.
I see no other hands at this time. Just give it a few more seconds. I see no further public.
Okay, we'll close the public comment and get to our public hearing. The first is a seven A amendment to San Rafael's building code to require replacement of wood roofing. And I see Quinn Gardner joining us. Welcome.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. It's not, Brenna, it's not going full screen. There we go. Got it. Um, hello, good evening. Um, hopefully a fairly quick public hearing. We'll see what, what public feedback is. Um, we kind of previewed this a little bit at the last council meeting, but, um, here again to hopefully check another box off of our wildfire action plan, looking specifically at the risk associated with wood roofs. Um, and the need to kind of retroactively, um, replace those based on the other work that's been done. Um, so when we think about fire adapted communities, um, basically, we're looking here where these two arrows are pointing is looking at how we can use our policies and our codes.
Sorry, Quinn, to interrupt. Do you think that we're looking actually at something, some slides? We're looking at you. We're watching you, but if you. As soon as you said two arrows, I was like, oh, wait, we don't, yes.
Yeah, I'm just worried that that's not going to be.
Yep, I see something. Yay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, as we, yep.
Full screen. All right, there we go.
Yep.
Okay. You'd think we'd ace this by now.
No, this is our third in-person meeting. We, it's a little bumpy. We're doing great.
Okay, Zoom share. Okay. Anyway, so that was the first slide. Not a whole lot to miss there. So I think we're okay. And so when we look at this fire adapted community, we're really looking at how we can use our policies and our plans on that upper right arrow, if you will, um, to help in this case with resident mitigation, specifically home hardening. So again, we really are taking this 360 approach across the city. Um, tonight, we're only addressing this one particular, um, really focusing on home hardening, but, um, as, as we talked about, um, last council, um, meeting, we're trying to touch everything here. So brief history slightly updated. Um, so in 1992, San Rafael did prohibit new wood roofs, um, from being installed. Um, however, that didn't create any type of retrofit action. So we, at this point, right, every wood roof is nearing 30 years old, quite honestly. And in 2001 is when the state decided no wood roofs for new construction. So again, San Rafael ahead of the curve. Um, but, um, it is statewide. But again, that's only addressing new construction. As a city, we know we have a, you know, we're pretty largely built out city, and that's why this retrofit action, we believe, is necessary. Um, and then the rest of this outline really, um, goes through the wildfire action plan, um, the passage of the MWPA Measure C in the funding. Um, and the last adoption specifically was for the vegetation standards and 4.12, uh, last year. And so, um, number 18 in our 38 points is the one we're addressing today, which did call specifically. And I wanted to put the specific text in here because this did go through a somewhat contentious, um, public vetting process as part of our citizens wildfire advisory committee in this discussion. Um, and this was the exact language that they felt good about. And so I thought it was important to, to pull it out, um, which is eliminating the fire hazard associated with shaking wooden roofs. Wood shake roofs, shake roofs, wooden roofs, pretty much all interchangeable, but the idea being that it's this combustible material on the roof um, that is wood. And I'll show you the images again. Um, and so it is this ordinance change. Um, and it does require the replacement within five years of the adoption. Um, and we did end up agreeing to that we wouldn't require the replacement at the time of resale, but we would require a disclosure so that it was up between those two parties to negotiate. So again, quick overview here, I mentioned these dates already, so there really shouldn't have been any new wood roofs since 92. Um, we believe there's about less than 200. That was based on some kind of windshield surveying we did in 2019. And, and the reason for this is because of how much we're seeing this really contribute to the survival of homes and ultimately then people, um, of course, um, and the fact that when a home can catch fire, it also has a direct impact on the neighbors. Um, especially with, again, our proximity of buildings, it's the city and things like that. Um, and again, this was supported by our citizens wildfire advisory and is included in the action plan. Um, I think this, when you really look at these numbers, I think they speak to, and this is just one data point, right, but um, almost a 20, a 24 to 50% difference when you're as close to the flame or the fire as possible. And it's the wood, it's the roof itself being the direct contributor in that case of, of 25% more homes, um, igniting. As you move out and you get further from the fire, if you will, or the flammable vegetation, um, it goes from about 15% to 1%. And I think that's also a really significant jump in that 30-foot window, um, which also goes to illustrate um, why that 30-foot zone is so important, um, because that's where we really see those ember penetrations. Um, but when you have fairly fire resistant construction and wood roofs, once you get past that 30 foot, you're really looking at high survival rates for structures. Um, whereas if you have that wood roof, again, a roof being one of the largest places on your house, right, that can just catch embers, um, that's when we start losing more structures. Um, a great example, too, not great, uh, uh, impactful example, if you will, um, was the campfire, um, basically new construction, 51% of those homes survived. Construction that would have had older roofs prior to the state code changes, um, only 18%. Um, so we, the data is there that supports this, um, and that's why we're before you really trying to push towards all Class A structures, um, classic roofs in this case. So those are the details, five years of adoption, again, disclosure requirement, um, and why we think the retrofit requirements necessary to address that built out environment, um, largely because of the impact it doesn't have just on that home, uh, but on the neighbors as well. So here's just a couple of visual examples. So the top left is your kind of typical shingle asphalt, um, type roof. Um, the right is actually, which I think is really great for any historic structures in the city. That's more of like a, um, concrete almost material, but it looks like a wood roof or a shake roof might look. The bottom left is tiles. The only thing with tiles I do want to point out, and like any roofing, the underlayment really matters and all the seals really matter. Um, so, you know, that's not just about the actual surface. Um, but with the tile roofs, it's really important that in those kind of bends that the tiles create, that we're sealing those off. Um, and then metal roofs are another great option. So just a couple of examples, but these are all what's considered Class A, which is the highest fire rating there is. Um, so what we're looking at for implementation, um, and we've already started this specific address gathering. Um, and our team's going to get all those addresses together, and that's going to allow us to do direct outreach to those impacted parcels, make sure they know the assistance that's available to them. They know the why, um, and that they know we're here to support them. Um, and then we'll work with them through that process. Um, and whatever that takes to, to help them not just adapt their home, but help protect their neighbors in the process. Um, so we do have a bunch of resources. These are listed in your staff report. Um, some of these are loans that can have relatively lower interest rates. Um, and then we do have our grant program, which depending on how, uh, the board approves the budget, um, in the coming week, um, could range from a couple thousand dollars to upward of $5,000 available, um, just straight up reimbursement, um, without any type of loan. So there, there is some resources available there. And we have included some of those resources on our mailer, um, as well as called out the importance of roofs amongst the other home hardening features. Um, and I, I do want to acknowledge, um, the Sustainable San Rafael letter that we got today. I thought there were some great points in there. We're happy to, to look at those and those partnerships and any type of opportunity we have to um, include those climate change modeling and how we can adapt. I think we're great ideas. So that is, that is the summary.
Great. Thank you, Quinn. Uh, we'll see if there are any questions. Um, any questions from this end? Yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Um, could, for the homes, since this last update you gave, now I've been driving around and all I see, if I see shake houses, shake roofs, um, I found one in our neighborhood. So, um, but I know it's a rental house, and I know the owner of the home is not local. So how, what, how is the approach to reach those homeowners?
Yeah, great question. So similar to how we have to handle the vegetation side of things as well. So we do have addresses from the tax assessor's office for anybody out of area. And so we'll mail letters and, and we'll get in touch with that property owner. In some cases with the rentals, if the, the renter can give us that information, that's great. That can help us bridge that gap. Um, in some cases, it might be a long-term renter, and depending on their lease agreement, like they may or may not be responsible for various maintenance items of the house. Um, but we have started to work with out of area property owners on the vegetation side as well. So we'd follow a very similar process here.
Right, because they won't, may not hear the update.
Yep, no, absolutely.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Question? No? Do you have any questions?
With more curiosity, I was just wondering about living roofs. Um, how do you feel about that? I mean, um, by the way, this is like a no brainer for me, uh, to pass the, it shouldn't be with them, but.
How do I, well, how do I feel about living roofs? Um, I feel, I have a lot of.
Living roofs, uh, you know, for fire prevention.
Um, I think like any vegetation, it's maintenance. Um, and, you know, of course, depending on the roof, we, we actually did have a resident who, um, by their definition has a living roof, by our definition has a massive fire hazard. Um, and so, um, you know, we have had to work with those things, have, and some of that too is weight and roof structures and things like that. So I think done well, I think there's definitely potential there. Um, again, that's a potential, another sustainable way to do that. Given drought conditions and other things, I, I would be concerned that the long-term maintenance of doing a living roof would make sense, um, but it's totally possible, um, depending on what plants and things like that. Um.
Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I have one when I work, so I was just thinking about the wild.
Yeah, no, it, and, you know, like anything else, if you, if you have the rest of your vegetation clear and your roof is green and healthy, your risk is minimum, right? And you, you have a good, and the other thing too with that would be a good underlayment that would still be Class A. Um, and so making sure what's below the vegetation is still going to have that fire element.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Hill.
Sure. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Quinn, again. Um, maybe officially slash unofficially, how, how much progress have we made on the 38-point plan?
Actually, right before I came up, I was thinking about that. Um, it is a lot of progress. I think the, the challenge is like item one, two, and three, right, basically got covered when we adopted 4.12. But they're not really done until we have 100% compliance. Um, and so I, I'd say like we've touched and made progress on over 50% of the plan easily. Um, but I, I'd, I'd say it's kind of a hard, like, are we ever done with certain items? We hire rangers. As long as we keep them employed, I guess we're done with that item. Um, but yeah, so, but I, I think overall, there's probably only a handful of items, and I, I do mean like two or three that we have almost not touched. And to some extent, those are all addressed through the grant program, which is, we don't feel like they're, we want people to spend the grant money on other things first, and then we can come back to some of these other things.
Would you characterize that the high tent poles have been hit first on the 38-point plan as far as impact?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Not seen any other further questions. I'll invite the public to comment. Anyone in the chambers like to comment on this item? Okay, not seen anyone. So, uh, open public comment for the amendment having to do with the replacement of wood roofing. That is the item.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I don't see any hands raised at this time. Give it just a couple more. Okay, I do have one at this time.
Thanks, Ava Crisanti. Um, I do think it's worth asking, uh, your, your fire department if they've provided so much as a fire extinguisher that's accessible to the internees at the SSA underneath, uh, the freeway overpass. I know that from the body cam I obtained through CPRA, um, you had a very, um, obvious complaint from one of the internees about the lack of any fire extinguisher. I've since been told that, uh, multiple tents have gone up in flames. And there was no fire extinguisher for, um, the internees when this occurred. Um, it seems like from other material that I was able to CPRA that your fire department has kind of a hands-off approach with this SSA, and that was apparent uh, when the death occurred at the SSA, uh, in early December, because there was no, um, uh, fire truck or, or paramedic that was able to go to the camp or apparently willing to go to the camp. And so they were, the police were in a position of calling around and seeing if anyone else had an AED device, uh, for the person who, um, eventually died. This does not seem, uh, appropriate or responsible. And because this is located in, uh, you know, central downtown and not far from where the city just had a gas leak, um, it seems like the, you should be asking your fire department to do a full inspection. I know they, they've put up even more fencing, which means that there's even, uh, more complicated path in and out of, uh, the camp. And if there is a major fire, that could be a serious problem. So I think you should address that. Thank you.
So any public comment on the wood roofing amendment?
I don't see any further comments at this time.
Okay, I will close the public comment, um, and bring it back to council for additional comments and then a motion, uh, Vice Mayor, any comments?
No comments.
No comments? Councilmember Hill, former fire commissioner?
Uh, thank you. Uh, yes, and, uh, just, just to hearken back to the history, and you, you did go through it um, at some length, Quinn, but just to say how committed the, this fire department has been for many, many years. Um, strategic in examining what we can do, not just today, but, you know, five, 10, 20, 50 years into the future. So I continue to applaud the department's, uh, examination of what we can continue to do. And I appreciated how you characterized the 38-point plan is not some check the box and we're done after we're done with the 38. Those are ongoing commitments to our future. So thank you for having custody of our safety.
Thank you. Any comments?
Just a quick comment from someone who was in the room when it happened. Um, when, when, I was delighted to be part of the, um, initial, um, 38-point, uh, meetings. Um, and there were many of them, and there was a lot of contention. And these, um, instances where we found common ground and brought it forward, um, are important to our community. Um, and this is one of them. And we had to find the common ground to see it come forward now is, um, is, 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 is great. Gives me great comfort. Um, I know it's part of a, a massive undertaking that, um, our, our fire department, our entire city government, um, committed itself to when, um, we, we adopted that plan. Um, and it's going to, it, it's never going to be done. Most of these are, um, things that we will, that the city will be doing, uh, forever. Um, and I'm very proud of the, the work that our fire department has done and that our city, um, has done to lead the way on this. So, um, when the time is right, I'd be delighted to, um, move that we adopt the new ordinance.
Okay, any comments? Councilmember Mica?
Um, yes, thank you so much for, um, really for the report, but also for being so proactive, uh, because I, I just echo with my fellow council members are saying, um, is I feel very proud to have this fire department and being, you know, very proactive. Makes, makes me feel so much safer. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Quinn, for that presentation. And I will go ahead and entertain the motion.
If I'm reading this correctly, we're going to adopt the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. I remember that we adopt ordinance 2009 and ordinance amending chapter 12.200 and 12.255 of the San Rafael Municipal Code to make local amendments to California building codes to require that all wood roofing be replaced by May 31st, 2027.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Jornz Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Again, thank you, Quinn, and the rest of the fire department for that great work. So thank you. Next agenda item is a biomarin development agreement. NIC Director Judice joining us. Hi.
Evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, the item before you is the biomarin development agreement, um, annual review. On March 23rd, 2020, uh, the city council adopted, um, or approved the biomarin, uh, uh, project, which included an expansion of the existing biomarin facilities. Um, it also approved a 67-unit senior housing development with, um, supportive, um, aging, healthy aging, uh, campus. So as part of that approval, the city council also approved a development agreement that requires, um, an annual review to confirm compliance with that development agreement. So that's what I'm presenting tonight. So tonight's focus will be on, um, what progress has been made in the past, uh, year. This is the second annual review. And there are four items that I'd like to report on. Um, the first item is, um, related to the north, northwestern portion donation, um, to Vivalon. This happened in the last year. Um, there was. Um, there was a, uh, agreement that was negotiated between Vivilon and Biomarin. The parcel was separated and transferred over to Vivilon. Um, and this constituted a donation of approximately 1,000, $1,330,000 um, at the time of the, uh, transfer. Uh, the second item is, uh, a need to contribute to a traffic, uh, light synchronization. Biomarin is required to provide a total of 500, $500,000. Um, and annually, they have been providing $125,000. For the first year, this is, this year, they provided another 125,000 dollars. This is the second payment, um, of their $500,000 contribution. The second, um, the third item, sorry, is a contribution towards shuttle service. Biomarin was required to provide $400,000 contribution towards shuttle service or some similar type of, um, traffic circulation or parking type of improvements. Um, Biomarin this year provided $100,000 in, um, in, uh, fees. Um, item number four is that this, uh, city was, um, allowed to use portions of the portions of the site for public parking. Biomarin negotiated a license agreement with the city of San Rafael this year. That, um, agreement was executed in February of this year. And then lastly, um, while not part of the development agreement, as I mentioned, um, the biomarin, um, obligation to donate the northern, northwestern portion of the site, um, allows for development of the Vivilon Eden Project. Um, I'm very happy to announce that Vivilon and Eden have full permits and they're expected to begin construction in the next couple of weeks. So super excited about that. Um, so, yeah, the, just based on what I've just said, Biomarin has, um, complied with their development agreements for this last year term. And therefore staff is recommending adoption of a resolution that confirms compliance with the terms and obligations of the development agreement for the second, um, anniversary. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Director. Uh, questions? On this item? Yes, yeah, Councilmember Bushy.
I, I'm not sure if this is for you or for the, um, uh, project proponents. And it's great that the Vivilon, um, uh, component is underway. Uh, what about the rest of it? When is that going to get underway?
I'm sorry, what was that? I didn't catch that.
The rest, the, the actual biomarin development.
Oh yeah, that would definitely be a question for, um, our, the applicant. And I did meant, meant to mention that Shar Zamanpar is here for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, hi, Shar.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, council members. It's really good to see you in person. We've been missing you and it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Ali, for your work. I, before I answer your question, I really like to follow up Jim with your comments and thank Public Works for their great continuous work in the city. We really appreciate Bill and his team and their contributions. So thank you for that. And I, I wish I had a solid date to give you a response to your question. We are doing our very best to be ready to pull the plug and start construction as soon as, uh, we know the demand is coming so that we are prepared. Uh, but the pandemic and, you know, the remote work and all of that comes into the formula. We'll definitely let you know as soon as we're done.
You're eager. Do you have any sort of timeline when you think you might know or how, what's the earliest possible date?
Well, the timelines that we have proposed in the development agreement is the, uh, six years from the date of the 2020, which we got approval. We are hoping that's for the first building. And then there is some commitments as to if we don't build at that time, uh, you know, what are the next steps? So we're, we're hoping we will have more solid news for you in the next year or a couple of years or sooner.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, you know, the applicant? Thank you, Shar, for coming. Yep. So with that, um, I will turn to public comment. If anyone in the chambers would like to speak to this item? Not seen any, so I will open the virtual public comment. This is on the biomarin development agreement.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I don't see any hands up at this time. Hmm, I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment, uh, bring it back for comments and then, uh, motion. Um, Vice Mayor, any comments on this item?
No, just really excited with the partnership we have with Biomarin. It's great to learn about the history as well as going forward and looking forward to next steps. And appreciate all the, the communication we've had, um, bringing us, as I've come on board, the communication you've provided and the updates. So looking forward to, as we move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, any comments?
Just happy to continue to see the partnership between the city and Biomarin continue to flourish. Um, I think we all understand and appreciate the mission and vision of what Biomarin brings to this world and appreciate your partnership in not just making the area between second and third, not just a, a lot that's empty, but something that will, uh, continue to bring jobs and vibrancy to our community as well as, uh, the, uh, Eden, um, in Vivilon, uh, housing, uh, project there. That will be really wonderful to see it come true. So thank you again for your partnership.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica, any comments on this item?
No, just echo, um, so grateful to have you here. I have been actually, um, in Spain, um, at a hospital where somebody was talking about biomarin. Uh, so I know that you are internationally recognized. I think we are so lucky to have you here and I really appreciate your partnership. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Nothing to add to the glowing comments. Uh, it's, it's been a great process and can't wait to see it come to fruition.
Yep, and I'll just, before I entertain a motion, just, um, underscore everything that my colleague said. And really the creative partnership, it's both the products that you bring to our world, but it's also the creative partnerships that you've done right here in San Rafael. So thank you. We are better for it in both the community, the greater community and our local community. So thank you. And with that, I request a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve, uh, the resolution for the second anniversary annual report to the executed development agreement, ordinance number 1982 between Biomarin Pharmaceutical and the City of San Rafael for the development of an expanded San Rafael Corporate Center, 750 to 790 Lindar Street and 781 to 791 Lincoln Avenue and 999 Third Street, case number P22-004CD. Do I read everything?
I think you got everything on that one. Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yoren Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much. Our next agenda item is a public art program and formation of the public art review board. And I see Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Oh, oh, I was, I was looking over here. Sorry, I was watching.
We're both presenting tonight, um, but I'm gonna start.
Assistant City Manager Lilovich. Hi, nice to see you.
I'll turn it to you. Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Christina Lilovich, Assistant City Manager. I'm just gonna give a little background and context to this item as Catherine gets the slides up. No rush, Catherine. Um, so in 2020, a couple of different community groups have these emerging public art projects coming forward. And we're asking us, what, you know, what's the process to approve these projects? And as we looked at the process that we had in place at that time in 2020, we thought this is, um, this is a, a process in an area, right, for streamlining and, um, looking through an equity lens. How do we make this a process that's really accessible and lowers the barrier for access to bring more of these projects forward? Would you mind just advancing the slide, Catherine, for me? Thank you. So in 2021, staff brought forward a pilot public art program to the city council. And the city council, um, basically approved an alternative process to bring forward these public art projects that, um, is exempt from design review and planning commission, which can be this very burdensome, long, long, extensive process. Um, just to recap that item, what the city council at the time did was amended the municipal code to allow for that alternative pilot program and also eliminated the, the high bar, the fee that was like an $8,000 fee, uh, to allow for more community public art projects to come forward. That alternative process was we created an advisory group, which, which had a planning commission member, a DRB, um, member, a park and rec commissioner, some arts folks at, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion, inclusion representative. And that group, um, vetted and reviewed those projects before they came forward to the city council. Um, those two community groups, the Canal Arts Initiative and the Terre Linda Social Justice Community Art Group, both helped us throughout the year in really designing and co-creating this program. And we've learned a lot from, from them. Um, next slide. These are the two projects, uh, the Canal Arts Initiative project, which was installed in July of 2021 is this beautiful, um, colorful mural as, in the entrance of the, uh, of the canal. And then the Terre Linda Social Justice Community Art Project was approved by the council in August of 2021. And they are, that design is complete, that beautiful mural is complete. And there's a lot of work to figure out the construction installation component of that. So the project team and the community group is working in partnership to get that, uh, ready for installation. Um, hopefully this fall. Um, before I turn it over to Catherine to talk about the new program that you're gonna hear about tonight, I wanted to pause and take a, a quick moment to express my gratitude to all of the members of these groups. The advisory group, we'd be here all night if I listed every single one of them. But I wanted to make particular note of, um, that youth and arts was a key member and partner in the Terre Linda, um, Social Justice Community Art Group. And then the city staff in particular, who really shepherded that pilot program were Thomas Wong and Stephen Acker, who I think is still here in the audience. And I really wanted to give them, um, appreciation for a lot of time and energy and work and working with both of these groups to bring those projects to fruition. And then I also wanted to introduce, I think it is Catherine Kufa's first day as our new library and recreation director. So I want to congratulate her. She's not new to the city. She's been our assistant director for a couple of years now, but really want to also appreciate Catherine's leadership in bringing forward this new program to you tonight, um, in her new role as, as director. She, before stepping into the director role, she, um, she's really spearheaded this, this next, um, iteration of this program and really thank her for, for that. So I'll turn it over to her to finish the staff presentation. Thanks, Catherine.
Thanks, Christine. This is, is not only my first day as director, but it's also my first city council presentation. So, um, yeah, and as Christine said, this has been a real joint effort, not just library and recreation, but community development, Ali Judice and Alexis Kaptenian, economic development with Danielle O'Leary and Victoria Kim, or Lim, sorry, um, Stephen Acker and Christina Lilovich. It's been a real, a real cross-departmental collaborative effort, um, to move from the pilot program into this proposed more permanent public art review program. So what that group, what this cross-departmental team did, uh, we did, we held focus groups with the two, with the Canal Arts Group and with the Terre Linda Social Justice Group to hear from them what worked well about the pilot process and any recommendations they had for moving into a more permanent, um, program. We also did collected research from other cities. We looked at other cities of a similar size to San Rafael that have an established public arts program. We looked at the makeup of their governing boards, the policies and program documents that help guide their programs, the processes they use for reviewing public art, the criteria, the selection criteria they use. And we, um, tried to kind of condense and coalesce something into something that we felt would work best for San Rafael. We also brought on the cultural planning group, which is a, a consulting organization that specializes in public art programs and planning. And they really helped us work through the final documents, provided guidance, um, and some really key recommendations on, on the proposed, uh, program documents. So what that proposed public art program looks like is there's really three components to it. There's the public art review board, the public art review process, and the public art selection criteria. So the public art review board, uh, let's start there. The goal, the primary responsibility of this group would be to help administer the public art review process and to advise city council on public art installations. Um, this is proposed to be a five-member committee with one of the members being a liaison to the design review board, uh, another, uh, community member being a liaison to the park and rec commission, and then three at-large members that would bring kind of professional or relevant experience in the arts. We would also, uh, propose a non-voting city council liaison on a kind of project by project basis, depending on where the proposed, which district the proposed art, um, program, or art project is in. Uh, this board would meet on a quarterly basis, although there would be the option to hold ad hoc meetings if there was a, um, a project that had a grant deadline or there was some other time constraint that we needed to meet sooner. Um, and this public art board would really be, um, administering the public art review process. So this slide here has a flow chart of what that public art review process would look like. Um, it would start with a art group, artist organization submitting an application at least eight weeks prior to a public review board, public art review board meeting in which it would be, um, considered. That would give staff enough time to kind of review the proposal, make sure it's complete, uh, follow up with any questions or missing information. Uh, it would also give staff time to review it with any relevant departments for any logistical, maintenance, safety questions that they might have. Um, the public art review board would then review the submissions. And from here, there's kind of two potential processes for short-term proposals. So those are, that are kind of an installation of one year or less. The review board would have the purview to approve or deny that request. Um, if it's a longer-term proposal, so greater than one year, um, they would make a recommendation. And that would, if it's, um, if it's at Pickleweed Park or Borough Community Center, that recommendation would then be reviewed by the Pickleweed Advisory Board. And then all proposals would go to city council for consideration. Um, it's, and one thing that's interesting to note here is that even our long-term art proposals or art projects would be considered temporary. So the, the city would be, um, establishing at the beginning a timeframe, be it two years, five years, 10 years, 20 years, at which point the city would come back and review whether we would like to keep the art, um, you know, remove the art, purchase the art. And this was something that was recommended by the cultural planning group, um, to give the city more flexibility. Also because we won't be, at this time, funding the projects, uh, we won't be owning the, there won't be kind of that ownership component for the city. Um, it really creates some, some flexibility, but it is a new approach. Uh, so it's something we would want to continue to evaluate, um, and iterate on as we move forward. So the last piece of the program is the public art selection criteria. Um, and the primary criteria really focus on logistical elements, uh, such as the ability for the artist or the project team to implement the proposed project. That's where we get to the, kind of, project readiness and the qualifications of the artist. Uh, we also will be looking at the level of community outreach conducted for the project, the maintenance requirements, um, how the design takes into consideration issues of safety and the needs of the site, um, and how the proposed project reflects the diversity of San Rafael. There are some, there's a, a, a kind of limited selection criteria that address the content of the artwork. And that's really specifically, um, prohibiting artwork that portrays themes that may be interpreted as derogatory to race, religion, sexual orientation, natural origin, or physical or mental disability. Um, artwork that contains content that could be construed as advertising as religious or sexual in nature or as promoting a political, political candidate, or that includes political text. Similarly, it would prohibit any content considered as obscene or indecent. So if this is proposed, if, if approved by city council, um, this program will be staffed by the library and recreation department. Uh, we estimate that we would, uh, we would begin quickly working on filling the public art review board, uh, membership. And we estimate that we would likely be able to hold the first public meeting in late July or early August. Um, and this is, you know, a new process for the city of San Rafael. So we would envision that we would kind, we would continue to learn from this process and iterate on it as we move forward. Um, so I did, I did want to mention that we do, I believe we have David Plutner Saunders from Cultural Planning Group, um, joining us remotely in case there's any questions that relate, um, to, to his area of expertise.
And there he is. Wow, it's amazing technology. Thank you, Director Kufa. We appreciate that. Um, questions, Vice Mayor? I'll start with you.
Thank you. Great report. Thank you. It's really exciting. Um, it was nice to be part of the pilot process. I think one of the things I learned is it's the art and then there's a whole other project about the installation. Um, and so I'm wondering, as part of the review process, is the questions around installation? And so I'm wondering, as part of the review process, is the questions around installation, like being able to deliver? I mean, because to me, it's it's done when it's actually installed, but that's always another whole other project, what I've learned. And I'm wondering how that's going to be part of the review process or not.
Yeah. So I think part of that, one of the reasons we're asking for eight weeks for for the prior submission is to review some of those things. So working with public works and then also working with the applicant to make sure they really understand what that means. And I think that's also part of the criteria around project readiness and the qualifications of the artists or organization. So I think that was definitely one of the things we had in mind when developing that criteria, that really ability to see through to implementation.
Right. Great. Thank you. Couple more questions. Has the city already received new requests for potential art projects?
Not officially. We do know that there's there's groups out there that are very anxious for for this, for this to be established.
And is the city identifying spots of potential areas? I don't know whether it's chicken before the egg or whatever that saying is. But I mean, have we identified actual areas that we would like to have art?
We haven't yet. That is, I think, something that could be a future step in this process. Typically, if we identify an area where we would like art, it's usual to have funding to go along with it. I don't think we would, it wouldn't have to be that way. And I think that could be kind of a future role for this board to 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 work on. Where do we currently have art? Where would it make sense to to really try and encourage it?
Great. And then getting the word out about this, I imagine the art community, just like others, like the May Madness, I had no idea there were so many car people out there. People, they'll get the word out to the community.
Yeah. And I should have mentioned that we did share this draft with the stakeholder groups from both the Canal Arts Group and the Terre Linda Social Justice Group. And there, they had some great feedback that we were able to incorporate, but I think they'll be advocates for getting the word out there about this.
I think it's really exciting. I do have sort of a question. The city was designated, I'm looking at Mayor Kate because I know the history. The city was designated as an art community district. So does that tie into this? And maybe you could share just sort of some of that history of that. I don't know who has the history on that one.
I can start us off. And I think Economic Development Director Danielle O'Leary is online if she wants to add anything to what I say. But the downtown area is designated as a cultural arts district. And it was one of the few, it was like 14 or something like, yeah, in the state of California. So it was a really big deal. And we expect through the Economic Development Strategic Plan that we're just starting now that it will be really interesting to work with our partners and talk about what sort of things we want to do going forward with that cultural arts district. So I think there really could be a tie-in here because we're talking about public art in general, not just in the downtown, but throughout the whole city. So they're kind of both happening at the same time.
Yeah, I think it'd be really great to sort of bring that back up to the front again and tie it in with this. That's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? I'll go this way. Director Bushy?
Oh, try to. I happen to be a council member tonight, but that's, that's okay. This is fantastic. I love, I love the idea of art. And maybe I'm sort of jumping ahead in the agenda, thinking about the infrastructure and our capital improvement plan and wondering what level of commitment of existing public facilities are being made to these projects. Are you envisioning just some sort of space where a sort of freestanding work of art would be displayed? Or are we imagining a mural on the front of the Public Safety Center?
I think it could be either. I think we're open to the proposals that are brought forward. There's certain criteria around making sure that it's appropriate to the site, that it doesn't impede traffic, that there's no safety concerns in the area. But in the definition of public art that we included in the proposal, it includes sculpture, it includes murals, it also includes performance art. So I think we're, we're open to what the community wants to propose.
But is there an expectation that to the extent the the work of art on contacts or on becomes part of a public facility, that it will either be removed or somehow the 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 wall or whatever it is a part of will be returned to its natural or its previous state?
You mean when it's, when the art's been decommissioned?
Yes.
I think those are some of the details we have to work out of how that would, that would work. We are working with the city attorney's office on drafting a contract template that would work through some of those details of what decommissioning would look like for different pieces of art. But again, it would probably need to be identified ahead of time on a case-by-case basis.
That will be part of the application will be the decommissioning plan, whatever that might be for what what is there. And and just to back up, and I assume that safety is a a key element here because that's really what started all of this.
Yes.
Very good.
Yes, that will definitely be one of the important criteria.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director Kufa. It's great to see you in this setting. Congratulations on your new leadership role. I had two questions. In examining how other communities potentially have used art commissions in the past, was there anything that we brought forward from there? Any lessons learned, not just from interacting with the the two pilot pilot programs that we did, or the one pilot program we did for the two projects, but what did we learn from, say, other communities that have stood up art commissions similar to ours?
Yeah, we we definitely drew heavily in terms of determining the selection criteria on what other agencies have done. Similarly, with the review board, setting up a review board that will review public art proposals, that's a very common approach in other agencies. So I'd say those were the two, the two areas where we drew most heavily on on what we found in other other agencies, that and the kind of application requirements.
And is the review board only in existence to basically wait for projects to come forth? Is there any role that they might play in soliciting or partnering, or who is it, or is it pretty much anyone in staff or the reviewer that can kind of do that on their own? Or do we have any kind of formal consideration for how we might solicit projects?
I think at the moment, it's focused mostly on what what comes our way. I think there will be particularly in the in the more short-term artwork with with regular exhibits at Falkirk and potentially other short-term exhibits, there, that might be a more regular standing item that staff is going out and soliciting. And the board is going out and soliciting folks to submit, kind of submit exhibit ideas. I think that's that there's a lot of ways this board could develop in the future. But at the moment, it's it's more kind of on the reactive side to what what the community is coming, coming forward with.
Got it. And my final question is that in your report at the beginning, you alluded to, we're not funding it for now. Is that because other communities are considering doing that? Or is it something we may consider doing in the future?
I think I would kind of defer to what City Manager Schutz mentioned about the Economic Development Strategic Plan that through that process, we may, we may see public art comes as a priority. So I think that that's, that's what I was alluding to.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hill, I would just add that we provided some very small amounts of money to kind of seed during the the pilot program. So we're not set up at this point unless the council chose to do so at some point in the future to to be kind of a public art granting agency. I know the County of Marin has a Department of Cultural Services and there's funding available through them. There's lots of grant programs out there and we can help connect people with funding sources. But it's not something that we've, we've done in the past. This is a new board for us, so it could change over time. But I think that's why you're getting that kind of, that kind of answer right now is because it's it's not currently programmed. But should the council wish to do that in the future, you could. But given all of the other priorities, you'd have to be taking all that into consideration at the same time.
Yeah, no, I appreciated the prompt and I appreciated the nuanced consideration for where we could actually go for for grant funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica?
Yes, thank you so much for the report and congratulations. So my question, I'm very happy to see here with the process that you are including the Pickleweed Advisory Committee review when it's long term. What if it's like a short-term project in the canal, not necessarily at Alborro, and it gets rejected? Like, I'm, I'm just trying to see what is the process and how we will make sure that people from the canal community will have a voice in that process.
So I think any, any project that gets rejected, staff and the board will work with the applicant to make sure they understand what what it was about the project that didn't fit within the selection criteria. And we really tried to make the selection criteria very clear and tangible. And and really, as I mentioned, based very strongly on on kind of the logistics of it. So, you know, hopefully, the way we, the way we envision it is that if you get, if an application gets rejected, they will understand why and they could come back having addressed those, the the concerns. I'm not sure if that address asked, answered your question.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Because I was thinking also, like in the short term, probably we don't want to get it through a lot of committees because then there's going to be, it's going to take a long time, which is not the purpose of this new system. So.
Right. That that was kind of the idea in making the the board the decision-making body for short term. There, in the, in the bylaws, there is a provision that staff may choose to bring a short-term project to Pickleweed Advisory Committee or to the city council, should, should it seem appropriate?
Great. Great. Well, it sounds amazing. And I cannot wait for lots of projects in the canal and all the parts in Santa Fe. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Kufa, and thank you, David, too. It's one of those items that it sounds, it is great, but the devil's in the details. And so you've worked really hard. So both my questions are detailed. One is follows on Councilmember Mica's question. The meetings, are they publicly noticed so people can sign up? And if they want to attend, whether they're on the board or not, they can show up?
Yes.
Okay. So I just, it's, I just want to clarify that because it is a brand-new board. And then the second is on the timing. On your slide, you'd said the first meeting would be July or August. But as this is a brand-new board, we will have a call for applications. I don't think that's on this. That will be on the next, in two weeks. So then it's a 30-day application process. And then it's getting the five of us to have interviews. And so probably just setting expectations here, probably more likely it'd be end of September.
I was too ambitious.
Right? I'm sorry?
I was too ambitious.
Oh, you know? Well, we wish we could squeeze the calendar, but I think just to, again, set expectations because I think there's a real interest out there in the community. Okay. So those are my only two questions. If any more arise, we will come back to you. So I will open public comment. Anyone in the chambers would like to publicly comment or question on this item? Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll open it up virtually. And this is accepting public comment on the public art program.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. And I do see one hand raised at this time.
Hello? Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, Mayor Kate. This is Kristin Jacobson. I'm the Executive Director with Youth and Arts. I just wanted to take this opportunity to give a quick update on the Terre Linda Public Art Project. As I think was mentioned, and you know, Youth and Arts has acted as the lead nonprofit partner with this project. And eight and a half months ago, we came together and you approved artwork and plans for the installation in Arbor Park. It was very exciting. As the city is in a new process, we are also in this new process with the community. And I wanted to give you a quick update on some successes and challenges we've had during that time. Since then, we've continued to fundraise and have secured numerous smaller grants, including the San Francisco Foundation, the Safeway Foundation, numerous grants from the county, numerous gifts from individual donors throughout the community. We've continued to participate in community outreach, conversing about social justice and the needs in our community. We've continued to be the nonprofit organization partner with the community group, not wanting to take over the entire project, but be participatory in it. What's changed and challenged us, though, is that the construction costs have nearly doubled in that eight and a half months' time. And that we're continuing to fundraise. And the difference between constructing a mural on a wall or a building and constructing a structure has really, really stifled us. We're continuing to work. We're dedicated to amplifying marginalized youth voices to address social justice in our community. And we understand that change takes time. We're so excited and we give so much gratitude to the city of Santa Fe and all the staff members that Christine mentioned. We're so excited about the Public Art Review Process and board, and we're completely in support of community-based organizations like ours to be in partnership in this process. And of course, as noted, any continued public funding from the city or county to make it happen. Thank you so much. I'll continue to update you on the process.
Thank you, Kristin.
I do see one hand raised at this time.
Yeah, it just seems like if the issue is social justice, why are so many nonprofits lining up at the trow to skim the money away from the city that should actually go directly to youth to be involved in doing this? I would, I would, I would take a look at the salaries of the nonprofits, at the nonprofits. And also, the San Francisco Foundation was mentioned. That's a, that's another nonprofit that's, that's had serial issues of skimming and not actually representing the 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 groups they they pledged to represent. There is a deep irony with of, you know, the most racially segregated city in the entire county of Marin, Marin being the second most racially segregated county in the entire state. And it does seem like there's a concerted effort to talk about social justice, quote unquote, to issue proclamations and to do these really performative things. So, you know, a largely white city council, a largely white city staff. And and to, and you look at your commissions, you know, they're, they're, you know, to say that they're not very diverse is a major understatement. And since it's all this performative, you know, proclaiming of social justice, yet, you know, the the most pressing social justice issues could actually be addressed by the city. You could, you could look at wage theft and how it's impacting people in the canal of all ages. You could look at police abuse of of all your residents, particularly in the canal. That should be prioritized. This is performative.
I don't see any other hands at this time. Just give it a few more seconds. And no, I don't see any further comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment on the public art program and bring it back for additional comments and emotion. I will start with the Vice Mayor. Any comments?
Just super excited by this. I can't wait to see what else comes through. I think we're going to have a real opportunity to tap into, there's so much out there. We know there's so many artists in our community. And it's a great opportunity to highlight the work that's out there as well as to bring people to Santa Fe and use the spaces that we have for public art. So I'm really excited and I'm happy to move forward.
Wonderful. Councilmember Mica?
Yeah, no, I echo Vice Vice Mayor as well. Really excited, especially in the canal, for the art to represent our community, that diversity and give that visual voice as well. So very excited. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
One thing we've learned through the pandemic is the importance of art. And I can't wait to have more art in in Santa Fe. And I think it plays into to our our theme of mental health awareness. So we're hitting all the bases today.
Good insight. Councilmember Hill?
So I'm going to potentially embarrass City Manager Schutz for a moment. This was the first conversation that we actually had was the discussion of how we consider public art in Santa Fe. This was when I was on the fire commission. And I remember standing in front of the Public Safety Center. So what do you think about this? You know, we have this, you know, we have a mural, a temporary mural that is put up by members of the community calling out the murder of Breonna Taylor. that is put up by members of the community calling out the murder of Breonna Taylor. And, you know, what, we have all these thoughts. And I just think every moment from then until now is really just been a thoughtful through line of how we go from operationalizing a pilot and then examining the pilot and proving it into something that is, you know, again, coming to fruition. The journey is still happening. But I'm deeply appreciative of, of every community member that's been involved and, you know, and quite frankly, city and city staff for making this real. So from a conversation that I had with Jim Schutz all those years ago until now. So thank, thank you, community, for making this real.
And I will follow up on those. The community had come out during the pandemic and had chalk, say graffiti, because that's what it was in our codes, about the expressions of what people were feeling. And we recognized, to Mary Beth's point, that art is something that we use for healing. And so working with the really committed folks that were up in the Terra Linda Group, and I want to give a shout out to Lorenzo Jones, who helped facilitate those conversations. And of course, Assistant City Manager Christina Lillich, who was there every step of the way. So that was going on Terra Linda at the same time. It's kind of like pandemic brought this forward, the Canal Arts Initiatives. And Rich Storick has been working for a long time with the community and really lifting up youth voices. And what we realized was our system didn't, we didn't have a system. It was the $8,000, which is crazy. And there was no way to have the conversation about art in a holistic way that ties into the Cultural Arts Center or District. So this is our opportunity. We don't take this stuff lightly for cities to take on additional boards and commissions because we take all of them very seriously. We want them to reflect the great work that we do and continue to do good work. And really, again, appreciate to the cultural planning group that helped with the details and Director Kufa and your team. This is super exciting, and I am sharing the excitement with my colleagues. I want to have a community that you'll be walking down the street and something will catch your eye and you, it'll be a piece of art and it'll stop you to pause and reflect and maybe learn a little bit more. So I'm just delighted. So thank you for all the hard work, and we will revisit it. I, I do want to say this, this is brand-new. This isn't like, okay, we're done, on to the next thing. I'm hoping in a year, why don't we have it come back on the agenda and find out what has come board and just to see if we need to evolve it or change it, but plan on doing that because it's something new. So with that, I think we all want to make the motion, but I will ask the Vice Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the formation of the Public Art Review Board.
Thank you. I moved in second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yornz Galati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries by zero. Thank you so much, Director Kufa. We look forward to more presentations from you. Okay, the last item on our agenda is a preliminary capital improvement program. And I see April Miller joining us, and I see Director Garance in the House as well. So I will turn it over to you. And we'll let you know when it comes up behind you. Now, we, we just assumed that what you saw, we could see, but now we know. Yep, we see it.
Thank you for having me tonight, councilmembers and mayor. Today I am here to present the capital improvement program for the next three years. This is to lead up to the budget discussions that we will be having in June. So what is the CIP? So it's a three-year planning tool where we prioritize different capital projects. And then we also come up with estimates on how much it'll cost to construct or design these projects. So the reason, or this document takes the entire city to come up with. There's a lot of cross-department coordination. There's different funds that different departments besides Public Works are in charge of. So it's a big collaboration between everybody in San Rafael, including, including the public who, you know, when they, sometimes they have ideas on projects and those also end up in our CIP. So the, the process, this is how the process goes. So throughout the year, we collect comments from the public, from different departments, from city council, from pretty much everybody on what ideas we have for projects. So we take those projects as well as projects from existing city plans, like the Bike and Ped Master Plan or the General Plan. And we rank the projects against each other to come up with what are the priorities for each fiscal year. So this is, we came up with this criteria a couple of years ago and we're continuing to use it. So the categories, it's a weighted criteria. And the highest percentage comes from health, safety, and liability. And there's also priority initiative, which includes equity, projects from the General Plan, and community and council goals. Then there's time-sensitive funds. So if we've received grants, then projects that already have money from other sources have a higher priority because sometimes they're time-sensitive or just, or we just have money to do the projects versus, as you'll see, there's a lot of unfunded projects on our list. And then the last one is maintain enhanced functionality. So this is, this is for urgent repairs in the city or projects that create ongoing maintenance for staff. And it takes a lot of staff resources for us to just maintain what's out there versus, you know, doing some sort of repair or rehab or replacement. So I'm going to go through a bunch of different projects that we've either completed or that are in the CIP, just highlighting some of them. So last fiscal year, we finally completed the Southern Heights Bridge Project, which a few of you were in attendance for the, for the, for the ribbon cutting. This project was funded by the Highway Bridge Program through Caltrans. And the bridge was closed for a few years, and now it's drivable, which is nice to have the bridge back. Then there's the Canal Neighborhood Project. So we received a couple TAM grants and through Safe Pathways. And we also used some local funds. This is, throughout the Canal Neighborhood, we did eight new lighted crosswalks as well as doing ADA accessibility improvements in other locations and enhancing crosswalks. Another project that will soon be complete is at Albert Park. We actually installed an ADA accessible restroom a couple of weeks ago and we're waiting for the accessible ramp to arrive. But once we get the ramp installed, then that project will be complete. Another large project that we completed was actually the Francisco Boulevard East Sidewalk Program, or Sidewalk Project. And this project was federally funded and it widened the sidewalk along Francisco East. After that project was complete, the city came in and did a resurfacing project along Francisco East. We have a few projects that are actively in construction right now. One of them is at Bungalow Avenue. We've actually finished, this is, this project included a section of Woodland Avenue, which has been complete. We actually completed the section of Upper Bungalow, which was replacing some old concrete road. And I will be bringing a lower bungalow back to city council in the next, in the next month to talk about the rest of the project. Also, the Third Street Projects, there's a federal project and the rehab project. Those are underway. I'm sure everybody in San Rafael knows that. So those are funded from TAM Measure AA. And then Measure E has funded our two fire station projects. So Fire Station 54 and 55 are currently under construction. That's, those projects total around $11 million, and we're anticipating having those complete at the end of next fiscal year. So based on feedback we received from the council last year, we started thinking about what some of our unfunded liabilities are and what our deferred maintenance costs are. So this year, we're proposing to do several planning projects in the CIP. We're currently underway on the Park and Rec Master Plan, which is going to help us prioritize our needs in our parks and recreation facilities. The CIP is also planning on doing a stormwater master plan, a building maintenance master plan. And we are, we're in the process of getting a grant for the East San Rafael Shoreline Feasibility Assessment, which is going to focus on sea level rise in East San Rafael. And some more construction projects that are anticipated for next fiscal year. We have the Spinnaker Point Parking Project. This was planned at council last year. So this is parking near the AJ Borro Community Center. It's going to add about 20 parking stalls along here. The project was delayed because of environmental impacts. We can only construct between September 1st and January 31st. So we were unable to meet last construction time period. But the plan is to, for this project to go out to bid early summer so we can start construction on September 1st. We also have the Sun Valley Park Improvements. We received a Prop 68 grant for this project to do a playground replacement and update the accessibility around the park. We're hoping to do this also in the fall, during the off-season, to not impact the community as much. We also have the San Quentin Pump Station, which we're hoping to come back to council in the next month or two for the construction of that. And then we have the Mission Avenue Sidewalk Project that we're hoping to do in the next, we're hoping to come to council or get bids on that in the next couple of weeks. That's, that's replace, doing a sidewalk gap closure between B and E, right, right by city council over, or the city council chambers over here. Here's a few key projects that are in the design environmental stage that we're planning on doing next fiscal year. The Grand Avenue Cycle Track Project. We actually received two grants for this project. We received a Bay Area, our Bay Trail Grant. And we also received a grant from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And this, this project completes the bike connection between the Grand Avenue Bridge, which construction a few years ago at Grand Avenue and Second, and it takes the path to Fourth Street. We also have, so the Marin County Mix Stop has helped us with some funding for trash capture projects, large trash, trash capture projects. One of them is funded, the full design is funded for the Kerner Pump Station. And they're also managing the design and feasibility study of four other locations in the city. There's a requirement that we have to have trash capture devices on everything in the city by 2030. So we're, thankfully, they're helping us with getting funding on at least the design and then looking for grants and other sources of funding to construct these. Another project that we're currently working, or that we're going to come back to council for the design of is the Pickleweed Park Field Renovation. The intent of this project is to turn the existing field into artificial turf field. The field today is closed about 50% of the year due to the wear and tear of the field. So by having an artificial turf field, we'll be able to use it all year round, which will be huge for the Canal Neighborhood. We've applied for a couple of grant fundings for that project, too, that we're hoping to hear from this summer. And then the, the next project is at the Second and Fourth Street intersection. This is the, kind of the final piece of the Third Street Project and just short of this intersection. So this project would complete the bike connection to the West End, and it would also reorganize the Second and Fourth Street intersections so it's easier for pedestrians to cross the street and for vehicles to maneuver through this area. And I just wanted to show, so as you can see in the tables that were provided with the staff report, not all of the project is, not all of the funding is allocated towards projects. There's a large portion that's, goes towards our operating budgets. Some of this is for general maintenance and our maintenance staff, but then some of it is also for annual programs. So I've listed, I've shown just a list of some of the annual programs. This will be provided in the full CIP document that gets presented to city council the first June meeting. But what I wanted to point out, based on public comment we received before the meeting, was we have a payment management program that has just over $1 million each year. And for this project, this is how we do the maintenance of our payment around the city. We have 331 lane miles, and so we have to look at the city as a whole. Every three years, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission funds our payment condition report. So we review our condition of our roads so we can look at the city as a whole. So just as an example, so in order to, to maintain a good road versus replacing a road, it costs 20 times more to replace a road than it is to maintain your good roads. So one of the, one of the goals that we've been working on with the payment management program is to save the at-risk roads before they become fail and also to maintain our good roads so that we don't have to pay 20 times the price in order to keep them good. So there's really a balance. And then we do slowly address poor roads. But we, we want to make sure that we maintain our good one, good roads, and we save our at-risk roads so that we can maximize the use of our, our payment management program funds. And just note that I had, the Fremont Markhard Road is actually listed as, is on our list of projects when we look at our, which poor and failed roads we do each year. So that will, we're looking at addressing part of that in the next couple of years. So, any questions?
Sorry. Director Garrett?
Before we take questions, there's a couple of things I wanted to address. The Rotary Manor Project is, is funded in the next fiscal year. So just, I, I hope some of the people that were here earlier are still listening to, to the council meeting because we are planning to do that project next year. It's been designed for, for a little while now. We now know what the project is. It's going through a similar environmental analysis to our, our parking at Pickleweed in that it's a, a creek that is tightly influenced and therefore no construction can happen in a tightly influenced body of water between November and June every year. So we won't be able to complete the environmental analysis in time to get the construction done this year, but it will be done next year when that, that window of opportunity takes place between June and November. So that's our plan for the Rotary Manor Project. It has been a long time coming, I have to admit. We, we, you know, weren't sure whose fault it was first, and then we, we finally decided what that is. And then we've been designing it since then with, with the Rotary Manor as part of that process, but it's taken quite some time to put that in place. The main reason I jumped up here is there are several projects that are potential conflicts of interest for the council members, particularly Councilmember, Member Hill and Councilmember Mary Beth Bushy. The Fourth Street Miracle Mile, Fourth Street, Second Street Miracle Mile Project actually extends to, as, as April said, the, the end of the, the construction project that is going on as we speak. That, that does touch close to Councilmember Hill's residence. And so that's a, a project that is a potential conflict of interest for you. We also have drainage improvements that are being proposed for East Street and Jessup Street. Those are not currently funded, but we do have it on the plan. So we're, we're highlighting that one as well. It will be, you know, evaluated as, as funding becomes available and eventually prioritized into a project. And then finally, the Fremont Road Concrete Rehabilitation that was talked about is also a potential project. It's on our list of, of, of roads that may be rehabilitated in the next couple of years. It's not actually called out as, as a project in the CIP, but it is something that we are considering. So those three projects are, are within your, your, the 500-foot radius of your residence. And then Councilmember Bushy, we are talking about resurfacing the Riviera Road, which is also unfunded. And so, but it, it is on our list as an unfunded project and need that we have. It will eventually be a complete, you know, kind of rehabilitation of Riviera, which is very needed. There's drainage issues there. It would entail new, you know, curb ramps and a resurfacing of that road. Again, you know, three of the four are unfunded projects at the moment. And one of them is something that we're seeking grant funding for, the, the intersection of Second and Fourth Street. But we are going to do the design. So that one is funded in the sense that it has a design element to it. And then we are, we've, we've already reached out in several different opportunities for grant funding to make that project happen. So I'm going to ask our city attorney to go through the process by which we'll get to the end of this presentation.
No, thank you. City Attorney, if you could speak to why this is accepting a report? Why, what they'll have to do versus approving financial allowances?
Well, because we're going to have a discussion and we're going to have public comment and we may have questions. And any of those things can indicate opinions, you know, when we discuss and deliberate. As our department was talking about the issue framed by the Political Reform Act, technical conflicts that Bill just listed, it struck me that there's this odd intersection between our now district-elected council members and the Political Reform Act when it applies to a situation like this. Because a logical member of the community might think that when there's an issue that affects their district, their area, that they would expect their council member elected from their district to be speaking to that item and participating in the discussion and the eventual vote on the budget as to that item. However, the Political Reform Act gets in the way and actually provides the opposite and says that in those situations... in those situations, the council member that has the property within 500 feet cannot participate. So for tonight, having reviewed this Fair Political Practices Commission advice letter on the subject and recognizing that we can have the discussion tonight and then later have the budget vote, we need to segment. And the way we're going to do it is like this. If any council members intend to ask staff any questions about those projects in Councilmember Hill and Councilmember Bushy's areas that Bill just identified. Could you please tell me at this time that you intend to do so? If you don't intend to ask any such questions, then I'll move on to what we're going to do next. So does anyone plan to ask any questions about any of this?
Questions in those?
No. And of course, I'm only addressing three of the five members right now.
Right. So we all shook our heads. No.
Okay, so then we will go to public comment. And as is our typical procedure, the council simply listens and there is no comment by the council during public comment. The mayor simply invites the next speaker to speak and everyone listens. And then following that, there might be more questions to staff. And again, I'll inquire whether the comment has elicited any questions about those projects in the two councilmembers' areas. If it hasn't, then the the final question will be whether anyone intends to call out for separate deliberation, any of those items from the general discussion of the capital improvement project presentation that April made. And if the answer is yes, that any of the other three members, or I guess it would be any of the other four members. So for example, if any of the four of you wanted to talk about Fremont Mark Ward or wanted to talk about the end of Fourth Street, you would so indicate when it's time to have your discussion, and then we would invite Councilmember Hill to leave the dais and leave the room as the act requires. Similarly, if someone wanted to talk about Riviera, they'll tell us before the deliberation begins, and we would invite Councilmember Bushy to lead the dais. Alternatively, if no one wishes to call out any of those items for their deliberation, then all five members can remain on the dais. And you can deliberate about whatever else you wish to talk about on this item. Do you have any questions for me about the process that I just identified?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. If we do, we will ask you if you have any other questions.
I will be here.
Okay. A little primer on the Fair Political Practices Act. Appreciate that. Okay. But are there any questions not of the aforementioned items for April? So advisement.
I do have a question. I think it's neutral. The funding sources, so Measure A is one of the funding sources for those projects. So there's a couple of them under Measure A that well, two of them maybe are that are the higher. If Measure A doesn't happen, come through, how does that funding get reallocated from something else? Or how does that work?
The projects that are currently listed under Measure A were actually approved with our expenditure plan last year. So those projects will still move forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, April, for the presentation. And thank you, City Attorney Rob Epstein, for walking us through how to navigate this fairly. In the, I I really appreciate the weightings, and I know we went through this last year, but I think it's always great to bears, I think, repeating in the weightings of health safety liability, 35% weighting, prior initiative, 20% weighting, time sensitive funds, 25% weighting, and maintenance enhanced functionality, 20% weighting. Is that, is that formula kind of industry? Why is it something that Public Works here has arrived at on its own, based on its own formulation? How did you arrive at these weightings? Because it, I liked how you explained it, but I'm just curious how if this aligns to an industry standard.
Yeah, this is the third year year reviews. We've used these ratings and actually that we had a committee with cross departmental, everybody, all the different departments, and we reviewed these ratings system to see if that is how we want to do it. There's not really an industry standard on how to rate rate projects. It's just what all the different departments came up with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I have a question that I wish to acknowledge from the beginning is unfair. But I think it is essential that it be asked. I begin with the the sentence that I think has been in every report I've read that of the capital improvement plans. It says, "The long-term capital infrastructure improvement needs for city-owned property, parks, and drainage far exceed the available revenues each year." That means that most projects are not funded. So my question for you is, what project that's not funded are we going to regret not funding? And or I should say that our successors will regret that we did not fund. And you can take that as rhetorical and philosophical, but it's the the purpose of it is to illustrate the point. And I think it is important for all of us involved with this to look hard at those projects that aren't funded and use what knowledge those of us who has experience in infrastructure to bring to bear where are the secret, the buried things, things you don't expect? That the the gas pipelines that you think are going to last forever, and then one doesn't. That's, that's, that's what I'm, I'm asking. I know it's unfair, and you can feel free to take that under advisement and incorporate it in the in the actual CIP when it comes forward.
It was a comment, not a question.
It was a, yeah, a thought project.
It was a thought project. Thank you. Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is actually a really hard. You know, what do you choose from, right? So I'm excited to see all the projects that we have already developed. I'm also acknowledging that many of these wish lists, they are not funded. I guess when you are doing the criteria, like, for instance, I'm looking at the pedestrian bicycle, is the how do I even say this? The line in the under 206 Gas Tax, the Canal Bike Ped Swim Bridge. It says that in health, in terms of health, sorry, I'm going to lose it again. Health, safety, and liability is number one. Priority Initiative is number seven. An overall maintain for maintenance is number three. How do we rate that? Because I think that would be like, is an example of a project that would be like a game changer for a lot of people living in the canal, going into Montecito, going to high school and all that. So how do you put that in there? How do you categorize that? And yeah, and then I guess the bigger question is how do we get the funding?
Well, we're actually going after grants for that one specifically to fund that. But as far as maintain enhanced functionality, there's an alternate route, which we are focusing on maintaining that and spending our money towards rehabbing what's existing out there as far as using city funds. So I guess that's why that one is ranked lower, but the other two are ranked higher. But we are still applying for funding for that project.
So but in priority initiative is number seven. Is that because he doesn't, it's hard to get the funding? Or how do you will consider that one?
Well, so it's, so it is, it is a priority, but it, but it's also not ranked very high in the Bike and Ped Master Plan. So although it, there are elements that are, it is ranked high based on community priority, council priority, equity. But it's still not ranked high in one of our plans that's created to look at all of the bike and pedestrian projects within the city. It's not, I think it's ranked closer to 100 out of 150 projects. So that's why it doesn't get a 10.
So when did we do the, for the plan that we have right now? Sorry, I'm trying to learn all this. So when, when was the plan that, you know?
Yeah, it was set about five years ago, and we're actually going to have an update that's going to come up in the middle fiscal year.
Okay.
Is there's going to be an update. So all the projects will be reassessed and reevaluated.
Okay, that's great, you know. Certain areas, like I'm thinking in the canal, you know, some of the roads. And given the fact that we have a lot of people walking there. How do we prioritize, you know, the pavement of the roads, not just the sidewalks, but the roads?
Yeah, so we're looking at, I mean, it's part of, it's part of our pavement maintenance plan. So actually, next fiscal year, we're looking at the canal neighborhood and downtown together to see which projects we can do for the initial maintenance. So next, so next year, we're actually looking at doing seal projects versus full rehabilitation projects to stretch our dollar. Because in the past couple of years, we've been doing full rehab, which costs a lot more. So we want to try to maintain some of our good roads. So we're going to look at that. But in some cases, you can, you know, fix potholes and then still do a seal over it, and the road will last another seven years. So we're going to do an evaluation of the of the canal neighborhood this year.
Great, thank you. And my last question is with trees. Are we talking trees here or is that a separate project? When we are talking about adding trees? For example, adding trees to like Bret Hart Park, for example. Is that part of this or is that a different project? I know this is Public Works, but I don't know if the trees.
Well, we, we have a lot of projects that will impact trees in Santa Fe. We try to minimize that, obviously, and we are planting trees as well. The sidewalk program, for instance, often removes trees as part of that process because they've overgrown the sidewalk and they simply can't be trimmed back enough in order to make the sidewalk work as an investment by the city or by the the local homeowner without removing the tree in the process because it'll simply grow back and take over that again. But and, and, you know, we did have to remove some trees for the Third Street Project. There's other projects that that will impact trees in Santa Fe as well. But we are certainly very actively planting trees at the same time in order to address that.
Yeah. So this one in particular, I'm talking about like Bret Hart Park, because there were some trees that they fell down and the the plan to replace those trees in a specific park. Is that part of this project or?
It would be part of the park project, and that, that, that's an operational issue. Trees do, you know, get blown over in the wind or they they reach their, the end of their life and they they become diseased or otherwise, you know, end up dying. And we are removing them. In fact, there's a few trees that we're talking about closer to here that are going to have to be removed soon because they're they're diseased as well. And and we try to save the trees that we can, but where they are diseased or at the end of their useful life, we would remove them, yes.
And I know it's extremely expensive. Any tree work is extremely expensive as well. But like, like, we're talking about removing, but how about adding new trees to parks? Because I know it's a big desire from the community that they really want to replace the trees that they fell down. You know, not, not just the one that fell down like recently, but the one that fell down like a few years back. So is that part of like replacing trees, like adding new trees?
We do add trees where where ones have come down in the past. The neighborhood certainly reminds us that, you know, that tree, you removed that tree a couple of years ago and you haven't replaced it yet. And it's, it's nice to have those reminders from the community, but we certainly try to replace the trees that come down. And we're again constantly planting new trees. We have an Arbor Day celebration. PG&E gave us 200 trees, I think, and we've been watering them for a couple of years now. So so very actively planting trees all over the city.
Okay.
And if there's a location that the community wants to see a tree, we would be very open to planting in those.
Sounds great. I think Bret Hart is very interested.
There's also the Park and Rec Master Plan survey that's out. And so if there's specific parks that you want additional trees for shade, that would be this place to for the public to comment to add trees.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if it was this plan or the the park. Yeah, so thank you. Great.
Thank you. No, and that's a good point for both the Bike Ped Master Plan and the Park and Rec Plan. Those will roll into that. And I think you did say that during your presentation. So so thank you. I don't see any other further questions at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this item in the chambers? Hi, Salama.
Salama Lox, Chair Linda. Part of that Chair Linda group. Anyway. I want to thank Parks and Recs for explaining about the Rotary Manor Project. And I wanted to know if there's going to be like a formal discussion with that community about the whys and the whens of that project. Because that was very informative for me to hear why it hadn't been done or when you will be able to do it and so forth. And I think whether they're online or not, I think the community would appreciate hearing that directly. I think that'll help a lot of, you know, stuff.
Thank you, Salama.
Thank you.
Excellent point. Anyone else? We'll see if anyone virtually would like to give comment on our capital improvement program. That is the item.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I don't see any hands right now, but I'll wait a few seconds. And I do see a hand.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sunny Lee, and thank you so much, April Miller. It's a very informative presentation. I apologize, I wasn't able to catch from the very beginning of her presentation, but I am hoping that I catch the most of it. One of the concerns I had was our district two council member here was presenting our interest in our district's concerns. And I personally, in our association, wishes him continue presenting and represent our association, our neighborhood continuously. I don't know legally what's allowed or not. If he's not able to because of the conflict of interest, then if he was able to appoint to someone else in the neighborhood on his district to maybe bridge between the community and the chamber. And also, I'm very much impressed on the presentation, how much DPW has been working on so many parts of the city. It was very informative, and we really appreciate so much work you've been doing in our neighborhood and beyond. One of my concern that I noticed was the there is so much money is involved on the funding that's been receiving from TAM. And I wonder if there's some of the projects was rushed to get done and finished without further study. Fully done before we get to greenlit in the past. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sunny.
I don't see any other hands raised at this time. I'll just wait a few more seconds. And I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment, bring it back. And I think we had a comment about ensuring that Rotary Manor gets to hear the whys and the wheres. I think that's excellent. I think that was heard. And the second was a concern about what happens when a council member recuses themselves now that we're in the district. I know you're going to answer, City Attorney, but I do want to weigh in that we represent all districts. So even though folks, we've gone to this district format and people are elected by district, I have to tell you that I, I know we all feel equally responsible for all the districts. But if you could answer from the formal standpoint about what happens when a council member recuses themselves.
Right.
The short version, not the longer version we already had, sorry.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. But I did leave one thing out, which is that if a member has a conflict and they're excluded from the deliberation and therefore out of the room, they can always come speak to the council from the podium. It rarely occurs, but that's one option. The other thing that the community should understand is that the only prohibition is really in this room. Council members regularly communicate with staff on behalf of the community, are conducting their investigations about all the issues that are going on in town. And, you know, engaging in that two-way communication with community members and then with staff. So that that isn't prohibited. It's really what happens here.
Thank you for that clarification. I think the last question was around TAM funding and whether it was rushed through. And I wasn't quite sure what the concern was. Because any TAM funding, often the grants come to both TAM, Transportation Authority Marin, and they also come here. So there is public hearings. I'm not, maybe you could just speak to that funding source maybe a little bit more.
I will simply say that TAM is incredibly collaborative.
Yes.
And well organized in terms of how they, they identify and prioritize and distribute funding to the various communities. I've, I've never experienced a rush job on the part of TAM, in my experience at least. And I've never felt that, that, that their process is rushed. We, we benefit quite a lot from the funding that TAM provides. I always think they favor San Rafael over the rest of the Marin County and. And, and we certainly have gotten our share of TAM funding and I think the process is very collaborative.
Yeah, no, and I would concur. As the San Rafael representative on TAM, when projects come forward for funding for San Rafael, all the other jurisdictions and the supervisors actually vote on it as well. And so I think what people recognize it as the, the key city or the, the city in the middle of Marin County, how important the traffic flow, pedestrian flow, whatever it is, the infrastructure. So we've been really well supported by TAM. I agree. I can, oh my gosh. Yeah, say one more thing and then we'll listen to the attorney.
There's, there has been some concern about the, the districts. And I just wanted to make sure and clarify that, that it's only within 500 foot of a, of a council member's residence. That they represent the rest of their district. It's only a very confined part of the district that might be impacted by projects. And I just wanted Rob to. Bill's, Bill's correct. And thank goodness Lisa was here for her last meeting because she corrected something that I just said, which was mistaken. So if, if, if there is an item that's within 500 feet of the council member's property, then on that item, even outside of this room, they shouldn't be interacting with staff on that item. So that was a misstatement on my part. I apologize for it.
Lisa, we're going to need you calling in, you know, in future. Okay, any additional questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain comments before a motion. Any additional comments? Okay, go for it. Let's hear your comment, Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, so anyway, I, I wanted to just say thank you, April and staff, for bringing this forward. My question earlier was about the weightings and I think it does address some of the concerns that have been raised, which is that, that staff has established a process and a framework to do as best as we can to align to objective criteria as we assess what are the most important things that we are going to do in a given year. And to Councilmember Bushy's rhetorical question to the room, which I think is an important one, is that, you know, we are subject to constraint. And the constraint is sometimes can feel painful to the community for projects that feel like they deserve immediate attention. And, you know, all, all things being equal, if we had the funding, we would fund them all in a day. That would, that would be a no-brainer, but we don't have infinite funding. So to that end, I lean into trusting staff on how we get there. And I appreciate the thoughtfulness in arriving at this formulation. I appreciated specifically that, that equity is, is a, is a major factor in how we wait. And so anyway, thank you for giving this thoughtfulness. And in moments when I can't jump in because the project happens to be within 500 feet of my, of my residents, I, I trust that staff and the other duly-elected representatives will ensure that the process is being executed equitably. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, Councilmember Micah?
No, no comments. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Bushy?
Just some overdue comments, I think, having been distracted by my rhetorical question. The, the trust that we feel for the capital improvement plan has been earned by this department over the years and the rigorous analytics that they bring. Working in cooperation and reaching out to every other member of the, the city government to get input from the people who are actually using these facilities. And then bringing it back to an objective analytical process that lines everything up perfectly consistently with our policy and our values, translates them into numerics that can be easily assessed and, and, and reviewed. It, it makes this job easy because it's all laid out there. It's all, it, it's all there. It's also very rare that we see something so well done. And it has been so well done for so many years. We sort of take it as, take it for granted. So thank you for continuing this tradition of rigorous analytics. I think this is probably the answer to the rhetorical question in that this is how you were doing your best. We, we are collectively doing our best to try and prioritize how we spend our limited funds. So I look forward to another year of a, a well-thought-out and well-founded capital improvement plan that we'll do our best to fund as fast as we can.
Thank you. Beautifully said. April, thank you for the presentation, Director Garen. In addition to the city funds, I know how hard you work to go out and find funding elsewhere. And that is not easy in and of itself. And I know that every time I've come across a grant and all of a sudden you'd be like, oh, we already knew about that one. So I really have that same trust that no stone is not unturned. You're, you're, you're opening up all the stones to see where the money is. And I think that really manifests in the infrastructure projects we've been able to do. So thank you. I share the commendations and deep appreciation. So with that, I would entertain a motion. Have fun in somebody?
All right, do a motion to accept the report on preliminary three-year capital improvement program.
Thank you. It's our second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Joren Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. We don't have any San Rafael successor agency. We're all going to wave to Lisa Goldfine and say thank you for all your years here. Really appreciate it. And this meeting is adjourned.